To address the council, typically we reserve this for if it's an issue that's not on the agenda. We'll move on to item three, our 2025 legislative priorities. So first of all, I thank all of you guys for coming here today. I really appreciate it. Just for everybody that's here, I'm gonna have Allie start it. We just wanna go around, introduce yourselves. And then Alan, Mr. Kennedy, we'll kinda tee up some of the changes from our priorities from a year ago. We'll have just kind of a discussion and any of your thoughts about session or what's happening in the council and kinda from accounting perspective. And then we'll keep the conversation going. So we'll start here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allie Allison Gray. I am the Senior Outreach Representative with Representative Angie Christoff.
I'm Mary Louise Holberg, Dakota County, most of Lakeville.
Good evening, Zach Duckworth. I'm the state senator from Missouri.
Bill Drosty, Dakota County Commissioner, District Four, with the sliver that Mary Elizabeth claims.
Oh, I would've kept it if I could.
Good evening, Jeff Whitty, State Rep for 57B.
Stan Alter, Lakeville City Council.
John Burmo, Lakeville City Council.
Who color, Mayor?
Joshua Lee, Council.
Stowe, Council.
Justin Miller, City Administrator.
Alan Cannon, Assistant Administrator.
Taylor Snyder, Assistant to the City Administrator.
Very good. Well, I'll, I don't know, let you tee up some of the primary things there and we'll have, you know, feel free to interrupt, ask us questions. So there's a couple bigger pictures, state things that we added in this year. And then I don't remember if we had anything on the other side.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Man, if you can go real quickly, so this, I'll have a copy of it paper or on the plate. And so I'm just gonna highlight the changes we did this year. So the one primary, let's, so let me back up. So as you all know, we do these legislative priorities every year to have focus on what Lakeville wants to see at the legislature. And so we broke in the primaries up into two sections. One is the primary legislative priorities, and then we have additional priorities. If those items come up throughout the legislative session, we'd like to actually have them on a list at least so that legislators know that it's also on our radars, radar for the gap. So, so the one primary legislative change that has changed from last year is, is a request for downtown Lakeville Social District. This should be similar to what Anoka has done. Lakeville's looking to try to, same thing in Lakeville. And then we have the perennial on there, the state mandates on local authority. This is something that we've always had here and that we're very serious about, that it's always impacted, strings attached. And we're very concerned about those impacts on local costs on municipalities. And then the other primary one is also, one of the mayor's favorites is the post office improvements and services there. So that's continuing to be an issue for us. And also the county of 55 interchange improvements with I-35, a project for us, we'll pay some attention on that. So we'd like to continue to have legislature focus on that project and keep moving that forward. Those are our primary legislative items.
Sorry to jump in right away. We've already kind of, last weekend I'm on taxes and the state mandates on local authority, but unfunded mandates came up from the county. I know Lakeville is a city that doesn't get LGA. What are those costs for the city? Those numbers would be helpful as we're sitting there, because I mean, we were hearing it from across the board and what mandates are costing you the most. But from a tax standpoint, just in those meetings, that was something I was gonna bring back to the city as I was listening there. Because I think, I think everyone's seen it across the board and how that gets transferred onto the property tax, and that might be a way to clean some really.
Sammy Payle is the biggest one, right? Of actual just dollars, it's new and that, as you know, doesn't go in effect till next year. But I mean, that's looming over us significantly and our staff.
You know, under some, one of the things we're worried about is the, the state put some money in for PTSD claims. We're hoping that remains. That's gonna continue to be an issue moving forward. And right now, there's been minimal exposure to the cities, but we could see that continuing to be there.
Yeah, that was one of the things that came up in pensions also. That money does run out. Where does that cost go back to?
Yeah, have you forecasted what you think the paid bill will be?
We have. It's been a while. I could, I can get that back up and working.
And are you factoring in the, the increase that's not come out? The hard increase, what that percentage is gonna be?
No, the last, I mean, we haven't done it for a year or so.
Sure, look at that. Yeah, okay.
Two years, I'm not sure if you have to do it. I mean, we're, we're talking about significant impact, eleven, though. This isn't, I'm gonna absorb it into our budget.
Has Fern's sick in, sick time right now, has that have an impact on you guys?
No, our policies were pretty much covered it already. We had to make some modifications to some of our part-time workers, but it wasn't significant. We're already covering the requirements.
Thank you. That's helpful.
So the new additions that we add to the legislative, to cybersecurity, it's an ongoing issue for us. We've always been making changes and trying to step with that, but it'd be, it'd be some interest in that the state could also participate in that and help out on a local level. We've got regulation massage therapy. This again, this is something that every city does. They do it different. It's hard for, it takes a lot of time for cities to maintain these and keep up on them. It'd be nice to have a statewide system to be able to have that regulated throughout the state. I always tell people, folks are against, they're all for local control until they're.
It depends on the price.
Exactly.
The next one was on sale, liquor and wine licenses. We had some unique situations in Lakeville where we had to kind of go through some hoops. So, uh, panic-related liquor, uh, legislation, state statutes. We're just looking to have a little bit more flexibility in allowing some of those licenses to be issued. Workforce readiness, this is pretty self-explanatory. This is really just giving prepared, better student or economic development. And then the sales tax and local government purchases. Got some big projects coming up. Lakeville, this would be a big deal for us to have some relief on that as well. So those were the other items that were added to last year's set of legislative priorities. And with that, that's pretty much the high, high level of it.
Yeah, and I just, I had a couple items that, one that I, that came to me since we had this conversation. Apparently, we've learned now that there's no penalty for social horse for cannabis. So if you have a party and, or a home and there's people who are not 21 and they consume cannabis, there's no penalty under state laws. We'll have to pass our own ordinance. I'd rather, you know, if the states have spent all this time talking about cannabis, maybe that they should put a penalty in there. So flagging that for you.
Let us actually figure out what the law is that we passed for this year.
Yeah, but as you know, I mean, because it's sold from the tribe and it's out, you know, there's legal cannabis on the market now. So it's not like we're waiting for what comes next.
Well, and it's interesting you brought that up because that is one of the things we talked about also about it would, by having the state do it, eliminate the black market. And I've heard that, actually. Assuming the chief would know more about that. That's what we're hearing through public safety right now. And that there are some laws in there where we're concerned about, we're under 18 getting access to it. And we got some loopholes in that. And I think that is definitely a rescue for disaster.
I think, yeah, and then obviously the other issue that I wanna bring in is housing, which we've talked, all of us talked about extensively about that. It continues to be an issue. If you have an update, it'd be glad to hear it. Our understanding is that Representative Howard has like nine bills. He's gonna break up the bill from last time about that. So we don't really know it's gonna be in there yet. Based on what he said on Friday at the MLC meeting, it sounds like there's plenty in there that the city won't like. So as soon as we get to see it, we'll let you know if we don't like. There's, I think there's certainly some places for common ground there. We actually, later on our agenda today, have some conversations about some things that planning commissioners looked at, that we're gonna make some adjustments. When it comes to zoning, but ultimately, I'm still a believer that with us partnering with the county to really focus on senior housing at that income kind of restricted, it's gonna really open up a lot of opportunity for single-family homes in Dakota County in particular. I think we can play a role in that. So that are some of my, my issues. But I wanted to open up to you, and obviously all, all three of your, well, four of your entities care about 35 and 50. You know, we've, just to update you guys, the county and the city have kind of basically put forward a preferred plan. And that'll be given to the state, has it already or by February 1st or like?
Should happen.
Should, could have happened already or I think it was so sweet.
It was out approved last Tuesday by the board and just a matter of paperwork. But they're, we've always been very clearly to be at the February 1st deadline as well.
So on, you know, that continues to obviously be a priority to how to fund that and all those certain things. There'll probably be some tweaks along the way on how that looks. But as you all know, it's a key corridor for this region and it really matters to all the areas south and north of us as well. With that, anybody else in the council?
I just have one other thing that came up since then as well, and it actually intersects with the county and the state. So last year, I'd like to say you changed tax forfeiture laws, which for a good reason for most of it. There was a United States Supreme Court case that changed some things. But it trickled down to, the state solution trickled down to cities as well. And so it used to be if there was a tax forfeiture parcel that the city wanted to acquire for a public purpose, we could do that before it went to auction and we'd pay the filing fee and basically we'd get it for that. If we did not use it for a public purpose, then we'd have to sell it and get proceeds to the state. We've taken advantage of that several times for right-of-way or some things like that. This year, the new process is that if a parcel comes out, we have to go and actually participate in the auction as well. And the county administers that on behalf of the state. So we had an example this year where there was a parcel that we've been maintaining for probably 30 years. It was actually the access to a park. It was between two houses. We assumed we had owned it this whole time and that we didn't. And so it went into tax forfeiture. It was the only access to that park. And so when the state notifies everybody or through the county, the neighbors know about it as well. Would have been a very attractive piece of property to get on the chief for them to, to block access to that park. So we had to go to a closed session, get authorization from the council on kind of a not to exceed amount. Then we sent our parks director to the auction. He got in a bidding war all the way up to like $800. It wasn't that. But I could see in a case where somebody might want to take advantage of that. So we would, had to go back to the old system to where if a city wants to use it for, for public purpose, we should still be able to do that. So that would just be something. And I'm sure the county would not like to have to auction off as many property here if they didn't have to.
Well, and there's the problem, the other problem with that is that the up to amount, at some point, the latitude of the public entity could be thwarted by a matter of 50 cents or whatever. I mean, and when there's no way around that piece of it, really either, it's really not.
Yeah, I mean, we just took a stab in the dark thinking, okay, how much do we think the neighbors are willing to pay for it? We got an, we got an amount from the council. Luckily, we didn't get close to it, but I could see that becoming a problem in the future. Absolutely. Is there, is the league or anybody have some fervance that they're already pushing that we can? Yeah, so I actually spoke with the, the league's staff last week about it. They're gonna start to coordinate possibly with the counties association and see if there's some joint proposal to come forward. But believe it or not, we're already backlogged for getting bills written. So the sooner the better. If we can help prioritize that, that sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah, sorry, I should've highlighted. So we, as I mentioned, we, we have the downtown district in here. We probably need to follow up with you to get, to get your support with that. So I'll have to work through that probably quickly. Yes. We do have the sample language from Anoka, so we can kind of work off of that.
Just to be clear, that's alcohol-related, right?
Yep. Well, I wanted to give an opportunity for each of you to provide an update if you'd like. You don't have to, but always good to hear. So let's start Jeff. No quorum today, right?
What'd you say?
No quorum today.
No quorum today. So, well, we go on. I'm serving as Vice Chair of Public Safety this year in taxes. So the sales tax piece has come up as a discussion of doing it as a blanket, but also individually. So please, that information's good. Get Matt giving the housing bill a little bit. Because of what's going on at the, the session right now and our colleagues from across the aisle not showing up to work, we can't have hearings. So we don't know what it's all gonna look like. It's a budget year. It's very important we get to the budget. And so meeting with a lot of, we had committee meetings all last week. They were very productive. Except one of mine in public safety got a little rocky. But we're just ready to, you know, continue to work and push these things too. So I would recommend getting the stuff so we're prepared and ready to go. We've dropped some bills already. That process might have to get all wiped out again. But it is frustrating because by not showing up to work, a lot of this can start getting resolved. In the earliest, if this continues, it'd be over seven weeks. And if we start showing up, Minnesotans want us working together and that's what I'm hoping. So a lot of this is a little difficult and, you know, the Senate is obviously purring along as we're.
How long that's going?
There's the purr of a cat and there's the purr of a tiger.
So the Met Council is finishing up the Imagine 2050 Plan. It's going through committees right now for final approval. Last Tuesday, the Community Development Committee looked at most of it, the Regional Development Guide, housing, parks, and that land use. And we were able to get the minimum density for the suburban edge to three and a half. I tried three and that didn't pass, so we went to three and a half. That's with looking at changes to how density is gonna be calculated. Supposedly, our staff is gonna work with cities over the summer, look at are there other things that should be netted out? Right now, slopes and, and wetlands and stuff are netted out. But changing the rules, maybe for stormwater ponds to be netted out and our stormwater features, different things like that. So, yeah, I don't think there's any way we're gonna get it to, to three, which is unfortunate. But if we can get some good changes to how they calculate it, it might still be okay. So I would want you guys to be heavily involved in that. It's only for new development. You don't have to get the whole city up to three and a half. It would just be.
So we should finish building it in five years or something. We get to be done.
Get done before.
Plot, plot everything out.
So that's, that's where that is right now.
Good. Isn't it currently at three?
It's currently at three to five. You can be as low as three or as high as five and, and changing it to a minimum of three and a half, there'd be no maximum. And it's been three on the suburban edge for 50 years. And I, I made all of the arguments about, well, why do, does the edge now have to be different than all of the other edges as they were working out? Because it over time is going to get more dense naturally. You know, once you, once you get all your greenfield development, that's all you can do to get denser. And that's what's been happening. And the, the council members that represent the core parts of the region adamant that they would not compromise. And finally, council member Tony Carter, who she's Melvin Carter's mom, used to be the Ramsey County Commissioner and now she represents St. Paul under the Met Council, she was willing to compromise at three and a half. So that's how we got there. So.
But at one point, the proposal was to not include like features of land, right? It just was straight.
No, they always said that.
Okay, I thought that they had said.
But there's hesitance on the part of council members that are representing edge communities of, yeah, we, we approve rules now and, you know, it's the, give me a hamburger today and I'll pay you next Tuesday kind of a, kind of a thing. We kind of wanted to be sure where people were even at rather than. And also, the Land Use Advisory Committee is talking about how we're gonna do the next round of grants to help cities pay. And if you guys could give me information about how much you guys had to spend on consultants, that would be helpful. Right now, staff is proposing that the smallest cities, the council staff would just do theirs for them. And then they would have grants for other cities. But there's talk about tapping it, not necessarily based on growth, but just on tax capacity. And I, I still think growth should be a factor because you're changing more in your plan if you have growth than if you don't. But that conversation will be going on over the next year in the land. I am the chair.
Some of the credit river doesn't want.
No, no, they're pretty, they're, they're, they're like cities that are, yeah. Cities that have like under 500 people.
Oh.
Like Nutriaire and Meesville, you know?
Really?
And it wouldn't be that they tell them what to say. It would be, you tell us what you want in your plan and we'll just update it. Because otherwise, they're playing phone tag with, with consultants. And it's actually easier and cheaper for them to just write it for them, whatever they want in it, so.
Yeah, and county, how do you want me to do this taking? Minimal capital investment, 50, 35, 20, as you're well aware. And the numbers, I'm sure you're all aware, increased significantly because of the inflation component. So I think it's 65 now?
62.5. Not including the right.
Just the energy. No right-of-way acquisition, no lanes.
We like you told us how long we wait.
No local road, you know them, so.
So on recycling zones and there are Thompson Park improvements and county energy efficiency and generation as far as capital side. And then we have a grocery list in all other departments. But one thing that might be interesting for you is our budget this year, what was it, 500? And I'm trying to think of the number, 23, just over half of it's on the health and human service side. And cities, in essence, aren't involved with that side. And just over half our employees, I think we have 1,100, just over that on the health and human service side. So all the, any program out there, federal, state, counties, the 3,069 counties administer all federal programs across the United States and they're the safety net. So whether it's rent assistance or all the medical assistance, et cetera, it's, there's, again, that's a big chunk different from you, but it affects your residents, everything we do. Especially when you look at CDA on the rent assistance and senior housing, workforce housing. That's another little separate element, but on the housing side, it's a big component. One key issue though with all counties is the state has a very antiquated computer system. I'm sure you're well aware of the governor's. I heard this morning he's putting in about 40 million, but we need at least 80 million because it eats up resource, the resources in counties across the state, antiquated screens, sort of green technology and coding and it, we.
Gas systems?
Yeah, we burn it up. Employees aren't really out in the field. They're doing the coding and it's really affecting staffing, et cetera. So that's a key element. Other items, can you, anything else on the health and service side? The governor's budget, there's significant alarm. We're, the governor isn't cutting anything. He's just transferring the cost to the counties. And we're looking at a 200 million number now across the state to counties for programs that were funded by states. Now the counties are gonna have to fund it.
He's cutting the money, but not the mandates.
Right, same as school district budget.
So, so he's, in the budget, there's a lot of alarm at our side. I know, we gotta still do these programs, but oh, where's the funding?
Just a quick question about, because you mentioned like roughly half of the 100 in the county are the, in social services side in the budget stuff. How does that compare if you have, if you own this? How does that compare with like five, six, seven years ago? How much has it grown? Do you have an idea or?
It's grumpsome, but it's always been the.
It's always been.
Been the grill of, of the, the by-check zone.
On the positive side, I'd say one great thing that's going to happen this year is that the Cannon Falls Dam will be generating power about the end of this year and it should be about a million revenue estimate. So that very long project.
60 years will pay for the air change.
But it was 40-some million investment, the same as Mancito and the overflow. Fortunately, that was put in there. That's what failed in Mancito and both dams were built at the same time. Other than that, any items we should mention?
Well, I think the overarching issue, and this is more given my past experience with years of budget cutting. And I think it is particularly perilous, given the makeup of the legislature, is that there is a high likelihood that in the last couple of weeks of session and the last couple of weeks of June or the middle of July, whenever everything's signed, sealed and delivered, there are going to be issues that are gonna come flying out of cupboards and nobody heard of, saw or had a whisper of warning about that are going to be used in order to settle the budget. And so my belief about the county's legislative budget is we should start every conversation with our legislative delegation in that we really need to be in high level of contact and a deep understanding of impacts. The $220 million straight-up cut to county funding in various programs for the disabled, et cetera. We see that upfront, but what's gonna be particularly damaging is those things in which we are gonna show up in really weird ways at the very end. And then we need to continue this conversation to say, please let us be at the table through this process. We know that there are going to be cuts, but until you fully understand the impacts, you know, an easy solution sometimes can have devastating consequences for a really long time. And there's a lot of experts in this room on a lot of levels. Don't hesitate to call us and we on the other side, outside looking in. I think we should really continue to drive home that message from day one, that we recognize that there are going to be cuts or things are going to change. But that we need corresponding relief in mandates in order to not just have that roll onto the backs of our property taxpayers and/or very adverse consequences to the people that we serve. So I, you know, I have like the 10,000-foot message at this point because I've never seen anything like this. It's, it's embarrassing as a former member of the House that cares a lot about the integrity of that institution. It's, it's horrendous. It doesn't have to be like that, but I, I know that this portends a lot of danger to local governments in May, June, July, or August, or whenever those final spreadsheets come out.
There are shifting gears a little bit. Are there any in your legislative parties like that that we should know about? Is there anything that?
Kind of the same thing. You know, with, we administer food stamps. I mean, you name it, we at the county administer it. And, you know, we've been told that a lot of the grants, everything. And, you know, we've been told that a lot of the grants, everything's been put on hold. John and I had a conversation with the Minnbad official on this green energy stuff and its impact to transportation and no funding for the mitigation, you know, again, for road So.
There is one other thing that will affect everybody at city level. 2032, you have to pick up organics in the metropolitan area. So that will be a third pickup. Well, of some form. So that's a third stream that will be impacted throughout across the industries, et cetera. Now anaerobic digesters, how many are needed in this state? Who's going to do that? There's a lot of discussion going on. But the one meeting we were in last fall, the estimate would be approximately $10 per household estimate at this point, but we'll see as you go down the road.
For a month.
Yeah. Remind.
And then it always leads to Minnesota not being competitive. I mean, that's the big picture. And a friend of mine that moved to North Carolina from Edina, her property tax for the same house went from 20,000 a year to two. And just because this garbage thing is getting so expensive and it's so frustrating, I asked her what her monthly garbage bill was, $20.
So, well, that's, that's another thing, state funding to score 29%, of the revenue is going to the general fund. And from my county, we'd say, hey, keep the money collected on trash and that we have these landfills. And that's another whole issue that doesn't impact you, but in Ember Grove Heights, Burnsville, and Rosemount, it's clearly an issue with where all our waste goes, or the burners and Red Wing and.
Are they closing the burners though? Is that part of the problem?
What's that?
Are they closing all the burners?
Just the HERC. Rochester has one, Red Wing, West Shakopee. There's one over on West Maturo also, but.
Oh, but by 2030, they don't meet the renewable energy standard, so you're not going to be able to burn trash.
But at the county level, it's a significant issue. Statutorily, it's our county's responsibility, the waste, the cities, you pick it up, but the landfills are county.
Well, after all that good news. Won't really comment much on the House. I think Jeff and John do great enough doing that, nor do I really want to. I think, you know, how this session's going to play out is still anyone's guess. You'd be asking to look into a crystal ball and try to figure it out. There are some, some pretty good guesses that have already been shared. Just a kind of a context setter for everybody. Just a reminder that over the last two years, you know, we took that $18.5 billion surplus, increased taxes, $10 billion, and it was used to grow government spending by 40% or $20 billion. And now we all know that we're looking at about a $5 billion deficit in the not-too-distant future as far as the state's concerned. And I say that to set the expectations with the city and with the county, because most of your requests are for money. And it doesn't take, I mean, my kids in elementary school can do that math. We're not going to fix this by continuing to spend. And so that's part of the issue. And to some of the points that were shared earlier, if you look at the governor's budget proposal, he's pretty much saying the same thing, only he's not being straight with you. Any of his cuts are really shifts. He's shifting spending to school districts, he's shifting spending to counties. And ultimately, that means it's being shifted to property owners to the form of property taxes. And I know as city council members, the mayor, the administrator, not the county level, you're ultimately the ones that have to bear that bad news. So if I were you, a couple of things I would be trying to do or ask or request right now are for exemptions to some of the mandates that were passed, some of which we already talked about, and at the very least, extensions to the implementation of those. I'm not sure we're really going to be able to fight and win exemptions, but we might be able to at least push things out for you. You look at the makeup of the legislature now, there's going to be at some point forced negotiations and compromise. And if some of that includes pushing these things out for you and ultimately for the residents of your city and the county, that might be at least a temporary win, or it might buy some time for some more permanent solutions further out, if that makes sense. But as it stands right now, the spending that was authorized from the last two years is really was on a pretty significant bind. Bonding bill, anybody's guess. People always talk about wanting one, if the city or the county, I know the county has projects, but if the city has some too that you want to put on our radar, at least let us know sooner rather than later. I know you're still working on a couple from a year or two ago, so that's good. But that's kind of really where things stand as far as we're concerned. Obviously, the Senate right now is 3333, there's a lot of good bipartisanship working together to pretty much look at informational briefs right now in committees. There's going to be an election later this week that will change the makeup of the Senate, and then you're going to see us return to, you know, the circumstances that we had for the last couple of years. And so as that continues to play out in this session, we'll see ultimately what we're able to accomplish. But what I will tell you is time is running out. Legislature has deadlines, although we do control the deadlines. But if the House, if Democrats there aren't going to start showing up until sometime in March, they're really going to be hamstrung in terms of things that can actually get passed. And that might be a good thing. Maybe we just look at budget stuff and that's all we pass and we leave some of this policy specific to housing at the wayside, but that's kind of where things stand at the moment.
I had just one more thing for how we're, 32 million a year of the, so they passed the metro sales tax for transportation. And in the governor's budget, he pulls back the 32-plus million a year that was part of the deal that the state would spend general fund money to fund the light rail operating costs. And so he just said, we'll use your sales tax that you passed and took that money. So there's another hit to the metro region that's not borne by the whole state that will reduce the amount of money in the actual transportation funds, et cetera, so.
So yeah, I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Craig's office. She is in San Antonio right now touring a farm in her new capacity as ranking member of the Agriculture Committee over at the House, which we're super excited about. That was a really eventful end to the 118th Congress, and we're proud to be a part of leadership now and fight for bipartisan and common sense deals over in the Ag Committee for SNAP benefits, for the farm bill, for any rural broadband investments, you know, all of the above. So we're really hyped about that. You know, this Congress, we have a few different priorities. We've got lowering taxes for small businesses. That is something that Angie always loves to say, a Democrat fighting for lowering taxes? Who would have thought, you know? And so we are fighting for that and also the passing of the Cooper Davis and Devin Norring Act, which is a piece of legislation that Angie has written that would require social media companies that are familiar with illicit drug usage or, what's the word, commerce, if you will, over the usage of their apps. We have to report it to local law enforcement to hopefully, you know, cut down on the illicit drugs that are on the streets and especially the impact of fentanyl in this district, which is, you know, increasingly a very scary and terrifying thing to have to face. So that is something that we are working on. When it comes to Lakeville, we're always going to be putting pressure on the post office. The post office, hey, Angie Craig has made herself a little niche of, you know, let's hold the post office accountable. So definitely working with both Lakeville and Barnum to solve some post office issues over here, bringing home the funding for Lakeville first and County Road 50, of course. I can't talk about more, more of the importance of that, so we're hoping to bring that through to the finish line. And then she's going to be in the district this week. Luke and Justin are going to see her on Friday to talk about kind of all the stuff we're talking about here, but a little bit more in-depth with her. And we're also having our inaugural Special Education Advisory Board meeting this week, and hopefully figuring out the best ways to leverage the federal resources to take some burdens off of not only our school districts, but our educators and our families that are, you know, enrolled in special ed programming around the district. So lots of exciting things, as much as we'll get as much money back to the district as we can, and I'm happy to be a resource for any of you guys in the process of all that.
I'm our taxpayers, so thank you.
It's not me, but I'm happy to take it for her.
President Kozic, we were just kind of figured out what we're doing.
Thanks for the invitation. I have reviewed the 2025 legislative priorities. It's good to see that they have evolved over the years without major shifts in policy positions. And as far as the patient committee in the House of the Interstate 50I-35, obviously is the top priority of everybody in this room. We'll hear that through, so I'm optimistic about that. And I'm surprised you haven't said about the status of the legislature. If you have any questions, ask me to take them, but I don't need to, or you don't need to hear my opinions on it. Other than to say, more globally, that I share Commissioner Holberg's sentiment that what's happening and what you're seeing on the news and what you don't see on the news is disheartening to the institution of the Minnesota House of Representatives, and that weighs heavy on me, but we still have a job to do. And my committee and I and our colleagues will continue to, you know, address the needs of the residents of Lakeville and our districts the best we can despite the circumstances.
Andrew Rickman. Very good. Wendy.
As long as I have a captive audience here, I have a small constituent request, as though I love backing up to Cedar Avenue. The city doesn't have a noise ordinance, but the state does have an ordinance that requires mufflers on all vehicles. And not only is traffic getting, is there an increase in traffic, but it seems like there's an increase in people running straight pipes instead of having mufflers on semis, pickup trucks, motorcycles. And for those of us that didn't qualify for a noise wall, it's getting really, really loud, so I would ask the chief if he would put some attention into that.
Any other conversation questions?
Again, I was just going to add, the county is hosting a legislative breakfast on Friday, and I know a couple council members and myself are going to be there. And then like Allison said, the Congresswoman Craig's going to be in town. We're going to do a tour down Progressive Rail, so that project, and then we're also using the opportunity to show her the location of the First Center, so it's just going to be an empty, ugly building.
Stream, First Center. Let me just say, on my thing on behalf of all of us, we're just grateful. I know not every city has the opportunity to have legislators and commissioners come in and have this cabinet, federal staff. We are prepared, and we do not take that for granted. We really appreciate the partnership that we have. It's really important that we are on the same page and understand kind of where we're coming from, so just grateful for your continued support and partnership with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for all these other conversations. This is going to be probably the longest one. As every day, things like ours always open, it really is. Yeah. 15 years a little bit, we're going to have food truck discussion, we love having a conversation about that. Joe is going to see the stuff, and Brad too, you're on the list, but okay.
I think I'm honored to be on.
You have some people in the hallway?
Yeah.
Got it, Scott.
We are here today seeking some input on two proposals that we received in very close proximity for similar events, both to be held in downtown Lakeville. So new food truck festivals. So we'll cover a little bit of information on that, I know Chief has some input on that as well. And then we thought it would be good for both groups to maybe speak shortly about their individual events, there are some differences in their proposals. So, and I know in the memo we covered some basics, timelines, you know, the proposals themselves were included. I know from our perspective, from staff's perspective, and to see input from the Downtown Lakeville Business Association, we received some feedback on that, and I think you can kind of guess what some of the general concerns and recommendations were there. I know speaking also for the Art Center property, there are different impacts for both events, and looking at the fact that they would be annual or proposed to be annual events, it's something I think that we would also want to take into account, just limited access for that site as well as the other businesses downtown. I don't know, do you want to?
Yeah, we can get into specific questions as we go into, but just in a general sense, you know, my role is just to, I think, voice what the public safety impact could be to events such as this, not just these two things, but community events and festivals like this have a different look than they used to. Specifically in Lakeville, we've got, you know, 80,000 people, so we have a very busy city outside of these events. Years ago, we could kind of dump all our resources into something like this going on downtown, but we've got a big city to cover. So most of these things, we're calling in additional staff over time, things like that. And also just keeping these events safe looks different than it used to, sadly, just with some of the things that have happened nationally, so there's a different strategy that we use, a little bit more resource intensive to maintain safety, which is our goal and primary goal of making sure people have a good time, so. But we'll answer your questions if we may have as we work through. Okay.
Do you want the groups to speak now shortly, briefly, or do you have questions you want to jump into?
No, I think let's have the May folks give an overview, and then maybe go over some questions and just do the same for August if that makes sense.
Sounds good. And Dan, were you nominated?
I was nominated. All right. Oh, Dan Kalman, you know me from Panaprog, I'm in charge of the food booths downtown Lakeville during Panaprog. I've got Jason from B52's, and I got Hayden here from Jerry Delight. So our, we did meet with the, we sent out an invitation, we did meet with the Downtown Business Association. We had, we had a proposal that they didn't quite liked, so we did look at some of their suggestions and actually chose the site that the Art Center parking lot has our site on the scene. We're looking at about 36 to 40 food booths downtown at the Art Center parking lot with a music stage in the north lawn of the parking lot, and then also a kids' zone in the north lawn of the Art Center. So the parking lot's in between those two areas. There's, obviously, we need to work out things with staff and the city. You know, it's always a partnership on different logistics and stuff, but this one, this food truck festival is a sort of pattern after the North Loop Food Truck Festival in downtown Minneapolis, where they just basically do it in a parking lot and just line them all up. But otherwise, we have changed our event license by. It was going to be Jason's B52's Community Fund, but we do have a nonprofit that is actually going to join us, the Lakeville South Boosters Trap Team, Sporting Clay, a team. They're going to be a partner on this, do a lot of our volunteer work on that, and could raise some funds for them also. So I think that, you know, a little bit lighter than the subject you guys were talking about earlier, so we're going to add a little fun to downtown and, you know, as you guys have seen me before here, or see me around town and stuff, I've been involved in Panaprog for over 30 years now. And I don't live here, but I don't know why I keep coming back. But so. And I don't live here, but I don't know why I keep coming back. But so I guess that's sort of in a nutshell. And if you got any questions, like I said, we did meet with the Downtown Lakeville Business Association and there were about fifteen members that showed up there at that time.
Mayor, Wendy, do you want us to ask questions?
No, it's good enough.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So I'm a little naive on this location and the fact that to me visually, it seems smaller to be putting in so many food trucks into it and not enough real room for serving the customer, for the customers to hang out, et cetera. And I'm sure, you know, according to your information, you went and checked out the parking lot. So you must have measured and realized how many trucks you could get in there, et cetera. I'm still a bit concerned about because it's condensed into that area and then all the people trying to come in and your estimates of how many people would be coming were, what'd you say, eight to ten thousand?
Yeah.
Something like that. That's a lot of people all day long.
Yeah.
For that. And I'm just curious as to, I realize that you'd like to be downtown. But as far as more room and more space, I'm curious as to, you know, maybe Hasi. It's still downtown, but it's a little outside of downtown, but it's definitely a bigger area to work with. And especially because I realize that parking could be a little bit of an issue, but between Maguire and JFK, there's quite a bit. There's a lot of green space there to host people to just hang out, listen to the music, et cetera. I'm very concerned about how concentrated your space is.
Yeah.
And if my biggest concern is that if you want this to be a yearly event, you want the first year to be as successful as possible with word of mouth. You know, because that way your second year will get bigger. You know what I'm saying? And so those are kind of my concerns with your proposal. I think I love the idea of having other community events. So that's not that. I'm just, I'm very concerned about the space requirement sign your proposal.
Well, and a little bit of the, you know, I think your intention is to keep it downtown to help support the other businesses. Your initial plan would be to have more space on the street. Now the businesses where they're not going to see any other foot traffic, it would move, right? I mean,
I think maybe it's a little bit high estimation, eight to ten thousand people. It's a lot of people, I think. Nice thing about it is you have the building and to keep it concentrated, he did everything to scale. So there'd be, it was fifteen to twenty feet in between each row of food trucks. Is that what it was? So Red Bull as vendor has six-foot outdoor, heavy-weighted, high-top tables with a twelve-foot umbrella. So then that covers like a majority of the walkways in between. So they'll be placed. I think it was, there would be room for four in between each of the rows. And then there would be a tent with picking tables on either side of the lawn. So that would be able to keep things kind of really nicely spaced out, have a flow. You're able to really control stuff to that way. So I think there's also like an advantageous side to it being a little bit more of a condensed area. You have a little bit more control as far as not letting things kind of just be a free-for-all everywhere without having to handle like criminals and.
And like I said, this is similar to the North Loop, except that the North Loop was probably their aisles are like ten to ten to twelve feet wide. They did it drawn out to scale, except that I got the trucks at ten feet wide. And they're only eight feet wide, you know, they're not, you know, trucks are ten feet wide. And then, you know, we, we, we talked to the food association, they looked at different, different things and stuff and it is part of the no, just like, just like at Panaprog, part of the fun of everything is the other businesses that are around, you know, you're walking around, you're, you know, you're you go to, you go to some of the bars, the restaurants, the Dairy Delight, you know, you're just sort of jingling around town. You're, hey, hopefully, you know, and we, as we know, there's, even though we're eighty thousand people, there's probably only forty thousand of them that know where we have downtown. And so every time, you know, Dairy Delight here is every single week, oh, we didn't know downtown was here, you know, so it's, you know, bringing, bringing people downtown. I mean, I've been a supporter for downtown for a long time and I guess that's sort of the reason. But I think that, you know, you know, my, hopefully we'll have fifteen, ten thousand. But you know, it's, it's, it's an event that you're not, you're not going to stay at all the whole hour. I mean, there's going to be people, you know, coming and going because I mean, basically your, most, most of it is just eating. You know, I mean, we're not having, you know, big bands. It's not going to be big, big expensive bands and stuff. And then, and then the children's area and stuff, but we hope that they're, you know, milling around downtown. We had the bookstore, looking at the, you know, all the other businesses downtown.
And that was giving my question is what how is access, is this envisioned as something where people are just coming and going freely? Like you might go downtown and, oh, wow, there's a food truck thing there and then I can just walk in. Or is it one of those deals where you walk in and you have a ticket and you stay there until you're done?
Yeah, no tickets. We have it, you know, fenced off and gated off. Basically, that is the gates and the fences, just so that there's no alcohol leaving the premises, this, the site. B52s would obviously be in charge of the alcohol sales down, down there in that, in that area.
We have the back entrance for the lot off to the west of Howland, that city lot area. And then also you have access off of the Holyoke.
Do they all have their own individual generators or do they have central power? I've never seen so many food trucks together, is it?
Yeah, they all have their individual generators. We won't be providing power to the food truck thing we have during, during, during Panaprog.
The first issues for me are how does this impact operations for our classes, charge of revenue generating for the city? And, you know, another event where we potentially are hiring overtime officers, and this is only a few weeks after Panaprog. So in terms of capacity and adjustments. Oh, sorry, this is the main one. Either way. Right. So I'm just curious how your responses to that impact.
Yeah. So the, I can speak to the art center implications. And we did speak just about access to the facility with that many people, obviously we won't be able to use access going from the art center standard parking lot. There are classes scheduled for that day, daytime. So we would have to try to do that through Howland. Typically this weekend in May, and that's why I was saying, as an annual event, I think there are some concerns on our end. That weekend in May typically is three performances, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This year it was canceled by the production company. So this year it is open. The past ten years, it's always been booked.
Sure.
The dates for August, there are two youth theater performances planned at the art center, but their impact is different to the property. Then, then this is where the structural differences are set. So, sorry, but theater has two shows that day, August 2nd. So.
I would just say from a, well, I love the chief, from a safety perspective. You know, we continue to see whether it's Holiday and Main or DL Boo, these big events that are drawing a few thousand people downtown. Just people zipping across Holyoke, you know, rather with no regard, thinking that it might even be closed and it's not. So I just, I want to make sure that we would, in addition to having security in the area, but then well around two hundred ninth and all this other direct traffic is just, it's a problem.
Yeah, honestly, for us, usually it's the periphery of the event where we have more exposure because the event is pretty good at taking care of their own things. So so the staff, this would be something we would, you know, like, let's bring in additional staff. We wouldn't try to cover it with those, discover the work, our regular shifts that day. Advanced notice health, so, you know, Panaprog's July, obviously it's a heavy lift department-wide. And, you know, I don't, looking at the plan, we haven't taken a deep dive, just we didn't want to get too far ahead. I mean, I don't think we're looking at fifteen to twenty officers by any means. It's not, you know, huge, huge numbers. And we supplement that if we can with volunteer reserve officers and those. But those are ones that, you know, they're on their own time. And so harder to get them in for, for many, many events throughout the year. So that might dry up a little bit. But those costs aren't passed on within reason to the event that they are. Establishment fee for officers or reserves or CSO. So and we've worked with them to determine a reasonable number, things like that.
Do you work on a case-by-case basis for what the number of officers?
Yep. Look at the event. We have some comparables and, you know, like has been mentioned, there's going on in other places. So we'll reach out to them and say, what are your thoughts and what were your needs and try to come up with an educated plan and a good plan to be within reason, but also keep it safe.
Have we ever needed to just recommend private security because of capacity?
Yeah, we shy away from that a little bit, just because when you say private security, it can mean a lot of different things. And there's a lot of different organizations out there. Some are very good at it, some are not. Not speaking for any events here, sometimes to cut, to cut some costs, they go with a cheaper option and it can be almost more of a hindrance than, than an asset. But but if it's extra sets of hands in the event or, or, you know, just extra sets of eyes, you know, we wouldn't hesitate to do that, but it really doesn't impact how we staff.
Speaking from just experience with people in Panaprog, we pair it pretty well with the city and reserve officers and de-escalation. You know, we like to hire them, put up extra officers to be on site and that kind of stuff. So if that was a recommendation or anything like that, of course, we follow suit with that.
Parking for this, I'm assuming it's going to be street parking, find what you can.
Yeah, a street, street and then the lot, there's a hundred spaces back in the, in the back lot and then all the church and Maguire and around around, around town.
Yeah, because I mean, it's gonna, it's interesting because, you know, the request was for a more concentrated area. So it didn't impact downtown enough. This is going to flood the area with vehicles. I mean, obviously there's going to be eight thousand people around once, but there, I mean, it will impact when access to streets and stuff downtown.
Well, we said that a lot of downtown businesses, that their main feedback was not wanting to close downtown and not have, because Dan had drawn up a couple of different proposals with downtown. And so for a couple of people, there was a request to have it remain in downtown, but off of downtown. So this was kind of by their advisement of some of the people that had requested.
And that can be a benefit too. You're parking and you're walking by shops and businesses and.
Just for me to understand my perspective of people, what would be equivalent Panaprog event size? It's just like, here brought some bingo-sized crowd, what are you thinking?
You know, yeah, that, that brings like five thousand, I think, instead.
But that's more shorter window.
Yeah, right.
Tastably, filming numbers on fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, get up to sixteen, seventeen.
That's more shorter.
And that's a three-hour period.
And this is going to be more open hours, come and go, a few things for kids to do, stop and grab a few snacks, check out the parks, hopefully it's a nice day.
What were the hours you're proposing?
Eleven to seven. So lunch and dinner service type, Saturday afternoon. High points closed too, so.
Well, I mean, having talked to a lot of food truck vendors, this, there is a demand. And I think there's a want for an event like this. There's no doubt about that. I think for me, this year is this this is a good compromise. I'm glad you went to the DLBA to seek feedback and they've changed their mind accordingly to respect their, their wants there. I just don't know what happens next year and what happens because I, I don't want us to get in the way of performances and other activities that are going on at the art center in the future.
We can have another conversation. I would, I would say I'm fine with this proposal for me.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Makes up a nice team because we all have our own respective areas of expertise, so.
Yeah. So maybe we'll just, you know, see how this one goes and then we can regroup at the end of summer and figure out if it makes sense from our center. Maybe it is moving locations and who knows? I think we'll probably learn a lot, I guess.
Yeah.
Shifting gears, August 2nd, folks want to?
Yeah.
Give us a rundown of your mind.
The strangest scenario. Hello, hi, how are you? Yeah, she's been in a ton of arguments. So I'm Jess. This time it's Parker Tom. And we've been doing this for a long time and we've organized some of the largest food truck festivals in the Midwest. And earlier for twenty twenty in the country. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the Uptown Food Truck Festival. Obviously that's like something we're talking about on steroids, right? And that that area can accommodate that. When twenty twenty happened, that, that area changed a lot. But prior to that, we had started branching out into cities like Lakeville that asked us to come put events there, Anoka being one of them. Very familiar with the social district, if you guys want to talk about that. Hopkins is another one who also has a theater just down the road. And when we put this event on, they do have showings and it's never an issue. Parking's never an issue either. But yeah, we've done thirty of these food truck festivals in six different locations. We started North Loop in twenty fifteen with the brewery down there. And then we kind of let, we kind of handed it over to the association, right? So the association is still running. Yeah. But our vision is similar to what his original one was, which is still our vision, which is Main Street. You know, the main drag, Holyoke. So from two, two oh seven to two oh nine or upper two oh nine. What we notice when we do that is that it actually benefits the businesses. It's always viewed as something that is going to be a deterrent for restaurants especially, and it's, that's the case. So.
So that's sort of a lot of large numbers thing. I mean, especially every time we come into a city for the first time. It's scary, right? I serve food, right? Said, enter a restaurant. You're going to have food trucks outside your window. Well, again, there's going to be ten thousand or so people throughout the day. And why we really want to focus on, you know, the city center here, right downtown is because, as you even mentioned earlier, there's eighty thousand residents. Forty thousand probably only know about downtown. We'll extrapolate the whole metro area, right? East metro, west metro, north, south. I mean, not everybody knows that there's a beautiful downtown here with, with the main street. And so we really want to showcase and center that. We really market these events heavily. We always talk about the location, what it has to offer, things of that nature. And we've again seen this a few times too, where it just ends up being a really good day for local businesses and restaurants because we don't serve everything that they serve. We don't have everything they have. We don't have, you know, air conditioning, things of that nature. So there's being a free event and just bringing people to town. It's one of those things where you're like, oh, I came for this food truck. I had that, but that restaurant looks amazing. Let me swing in there.
And the other condition, obviously. So, yeah, with that too, we always provide ample seating and tables for people to sit at or stand at with your food. But there's, yeah, there's a lot of things that the restaurants have and then people can walk by the shops. You know, go in and out of shops. And if there ever is an issue or, or a store owner has a problem, we like to go to each person individually, introduce ourselves, leave their contact information, let them know how they're going to be affected, if the roads are going to be closed, from what time to what time. And then we leave our cell phone numbers. They can tell us if there were any issues, whether it's the day of or, or after the day's over. So we can address those things and talk about them together. So that's a big thing that we do. I have ran the Minnesota Food Truck Association, which is a nonprofit for food trucks in the state of Minnesota for the last ten years. And so we get, the majority of them are part of our events. And yeah, we, these are the only events that we do. We've done thirty of them. We know how many food trucks are needed for the amount of people. We know how to lay them out. We know which food trucks not to put next to another. And as long as they show up on time or leave some space, we can accommodate. But And as long as they show up on time or leave some space, we can accommodate, but yeah, we, we, we've kind of got this down to a science. And, uh, we also try not to ask much of the city at all. Uh, the only resources that we would ask for would be whatever you require of us, like after you please. Um, and, you know, we like to pay you for your services, so it should only generate money. Uh, Hopkins only had two cops last year, uh, for us, it was no issue. They asked us to, um, supplement that with our volunteers, which is feeding their starving children. And, uh, any other type of security, we could have at entrance points, enter exit points. But we're, we're super family friendly event, uh, there's lots of stuff to do for just about everybody, including animals. So, um, yeah, we, we don't really have a rowdy crowd by any means and we've never had.
Also work with, um, the Villa Group, if you guys are familiar at all, they do a lot of the large events for trash removal services. So we really believe in that scout's rule of leaving your campsite out of the new found it, so to speak. And so we, we have streets we can run through at the end of the night and we also have people throughout the day, um, you know, servicing cycle and trash bins. And, uh, making sure the site's clean, because everything you do produces waste.
And, uh, usually work with each city to ask when their trash is picked up and if you guys want us to cover your trash cans, so you guys won't have to worry about that. It's a lot of trash, it accumulates a lot of waste, it's our largest bill. Um, so if you guys don't want that, we cover your trash cans, that's something that our trash guy does, and then we street sweep at the end of the day.
So, uh, question on your site plan, um, where your beer garden is located is in front of a brewery? I don't think you'd be very pleased.
Yeah, no, we'll.
Probably not directly in front, it's just maybe.
It's pretty good, yeah, I'm just talking about history of, yeah.
We'd be happy to move, this was just like.
I'm just, while I was wondering if you're partnering or what, so that was my question. Get reached out there at all, so I'd be curious.
Just want to reach out to him.
Until we discuss, yeah.
Oh, so you're open to partnering with some of the businesses?
Open partnering with, yeah, all kinds of local businesses, absolutely.
Um, I, when I went to the website that was listed on your application, it's just like in process for now for twenty twenty five, the way.
Oh, yeah, we haven't, we've been waiting to re-release, so to speak.
Well, I was hoping to look for some of, like, the history of, like, the last year or two, just photos to be able to see, you know, what your event looks like.
Yeah, Facebook is a perfect spot to go to.
Click on any of the cities, there are listed, like, were you going to click on any cities that were listed in the top tabs, like Anoka or Hopkins?
Okay, so I didn't click on those, I was just looking by what was on your initial.
I'm happy to show you a workaround later. But, uh, if you just search Minnesota Food Truck Festival, even in the search, but Facebook, um, and I understand not everybody's on it, but, um, that's a good way to do it.
We had a lot, so we do a heavy PR, we're on every news station multiple times throughout the summer.
Oh, I'm not critiquing, I'm just saying that it's. It was just a little hard for me to, you know, I guess, I didn't take the time between Friday and today or whatever to even make any pump house on Anoka or. To see, I guess I, I felt as though that you definitely have a lot of experience in this. So that was extremely helpful, I mean, I, and I liked, um, the fact that, you know, you, uh, partner with a charity to be able to put on the, the event, et cetera. And I guess I do agree with the theory that, um, that the, even though the downtown businesses have just kind of like, uh, put up some resistance, um, I don't think that they really understand the benefits. It's a little diff, it's too, uh, if they were to take Panabrog in mind, that's different. The mindset of the people that are down there for Panabrog are thinking about other things than business related. And I know that with your proposal to your, your bringing crafts, something else to be able to attract people to walk around and, um, basically would make them more enti, entice them to go into the businesses, because now they're, they're also in a spending mode of, um, the food coma now, let's spend.
And we have live music throughout the day and music in other areas like a mechanical bowl. You know, we have a vintage, a mobile vintage record guy who plays music. So we kind of try to put those at various ends and we create, we do everything, we kind of make each area a place you want to be, not just one central spot. So, yeah, that also helps, you know, with.
So when you investigated downtown Lakeville, you, you had to have saved some obstacles.
Yeah.
Okay, and how were you going to overcome some of those obstacles?
Which ones are you talking about?
Well, I don't know, let's go through the obvious, parking.
Parking, like, like attendance coming? Uh, so we, we are asked this every time we move to a city and somehow the people just find places to park, it's pretty incredible. Or they walk, or they ride share, um, or they'll take buses, but yeah, I don't know. It's never been like a major complaint or issue, once see that happens, it's kind of like, oh, we thought that we made it, I don't, I don't know.
No, I'm not saying that it's a complaint, I guess it's, what I'm trying to figure out is if you, when you researched it, you saw, okay, this is definitely different from an open Hopkins. You know, how would we adapt to the city of Lakeville as far as putting on a successful event?
In regards to specifically parking?
Well, anything, I mean, you, you guys are the pros, I don't even know all the, the obstacles, but you had to have encountered them when you are, um, coming to a different city. Each city would have its own problems.
Certainly, um, we do see a lot of commonalities, just as a whole, you know, with Anoka and Hopkins. And I'm not trying to say that you guys are the same, because I foresee every city is very different. But what we've found is when we do like for parking, for example, in a city center, people just figure it out. They're used to kind of figuring it out in the city center. If you do something like in a parking lot, and, um, I can use our St. Paul, uh, events as an example. People like expect parking more so than if it's like in an actual city center, which is kind of strange to me. But, um, people just have historically just figured it out. And I know that's not the best answer you're probably looking for, but, uh.
If you feel you're lucky, not always, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what we would, we'd be, we would be looking for is your guidance and suggestions. So I mean, if you had, you know, an idea or a solution to that, we would be totally open to exploring it.
So when I ask questions, it's not because I haven't answered, I'm trying my.
Yes, no, I love it.
So I, you know, that's why I can't help you with the answer, cause I don't know, it's just a question that came into my mind and then there's no thought process behind it.
And I probably know, cause there's more parking down here than there is. But I did have a question about your experience with, uh, social districts and how that changes the event, uh, from cities that do and do not have.
Oh, my gosh, it's a great question, we were super nervous about it last year. We really, we knew it was in the works, but they were talking about it for twenty twenty six, no, twenty twenty five, it was supposed to get rolled up.
We heard from Lex about it.
Yeah.
Many years.
They told us, we, we have, we're super close with the city, um, we love working with Anoka, they've asked to come back every year since twenty seventeen, we love them. Um, we were really nervous, because that's a big generator for our charity, it's a big generator just for expenses, you know, in general. And it, it blew our expectations underwater. Um, I don't know, you'd have to ask Anoka what kind of issues they're seeing with their other events. They, they gave a cap on their social district timeline to end before Halloween. So they don't want to go to when everybody's like getting really crazy, um, they just do it from May to Labor Day, I think. So that's interesting, and I don't know if that'll change over time, but the whole idea was to get people to the river, uh, and that park area where there's new van shelf, if you're familiar. It's gorgeous, and we actually took their advice and moved all of our stuff off of the Main Street area and over to there after five years of being on Main Street, so.
Okay, that went really good, it, it's, you know, expectations and I, I almost feel like, and this is akin to what we were talking about earlier. Like maybe we were an established business, so to speak, on the, on the Main Street. And then all, like, them changing this was kind of akin to putting a food truck festival in front of the front door. But it all worked together and like it was amazing and now year two, we're like, we're looking forward to it.
You got the idea for the social district.
Can you talk about it, if you've had any conversations with our downtown business association?
We have, and this goes back to, we wanted to talk with you guys feasibility before.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of feedback from them will help us a little bit in this situation. Cause as I look at the site map, it looks like you guys did a pretty good job where most of the businesses you can still access. But, you know, that's, I'm assuming on a Saturday, you know, there's still karate lessons, there's still pottery, and there's still other stuff going. Um, and so I just, I'm hesitant on, um, the street closure, because Panabrog is in its fifty sixth year, which is our town festival. We get plenty of complaints from businesses who have dealt with it for forty five years, and I think we do a pretty good job of managing it. So I'm just saying it to be very upfront that I think this is a great idea. I don't know how it's going to work.
We had, we had to hear a lot about Panabrog.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, it is, it is a major source of some frustration of business owners. And I can give you a hundred reasons why I agree and don't agree with them, but I'm just laying that out there, that that's the environment in, which is I think why. Not to compete you guys against each other, because it's a very different model. But it's a little bit easier to sell a compact parking lot than this. And then ten days later is our Taste of Lakeville, which again is different, but still draws a lot of people downtown. So I know, again, you know, Michelle is right, I mean, Hasi is a unique side, I know you want to be downtown, but we could have more conversation. It's our, our sheet of ice that we have covered is part of it, plus it's a giant parking lot. And then there's a junior high written store, and that's just a quarter mile out of our downtown, maybe show them this, but.
We shared both, so we shared Hasi, Casperson.
Okay.
With both groups as, as options.
My point being is, and these guys win, I'm not completely going to make a decision, I think this is an ongoing conversation, I think we have plenty of time, I think. I don't know what your kind of window is, but, uh, I'm not saying months, I'm just saying over the next couple of weeks, we need to have some conversation with some stakeholders.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm curious too, when you talk about the site, I see entrances and exits, and I see the yellow, or I actually have two questions, this is the first one.
Yeah.
The yellow borders, is that a soft border or a firm border?
More visual, and then the entrance exit points are more or less areas where we would expect people to naturally enter. And we'd also be able to kind of make it a little bit of a choke point, so that there's some control in terms of what's coming in and out.
Yeah, so traffic delineators, cement barricades, safety, things like that.
And obviously, uh, some open container.
Yeah.
So, okay, and then the other question I have is more, uh, it's, Lakeville's interesting, because we are a community where a lot of the people that live here don't realize they live here. And so I see things downtown and then going, a lot of opportunity to get people engaged in downtown at what normally be. So I'm assuming, like, I'm looking at your website and the information that you probably advertise it as far and wide, but do you do anything special in these communities that you're in? To hit the areas that aren't, you know, within a couple of miles of downtown, uh, to let them know about this and to like hurry?
Oh, sure, yeah, so I mean, we go door to door, if once we're approved in the city that we're at, um, like we said before, just to make sure, ask what their needs are, make sure, like, we'll show them the map, get their contact information. But if there's anyone else that you guys feel that we need to touch and there's a good way to do that, absolutely, we'd love to. And then we hope that, we usually go around the posters.
Yeah.
Just to, anywhere that we can, let people know in the surrounding area. Um, and then we just hope that word of mouth or media or have meetings would be good for anyone who's within that, this, this city.
And so you looked at Hasi Arena and the new pavilion and, ah, no, this wouldn't work.
It's not that we couldn't make it work, it's that, you know, the way that we truly believe that this event is going to be the most successful is to put it right downtown. And, and again, with our experience of thirty events doing exactly this, this is what we always see.
I, I've just been on your Facebook page and I'm hungry. I love the concept, I'd like to do something like its work. Uh, my concern is the timing of, you know, how close to Panabrog too, I mean, that is hugely disruptive and this is just a couple of weeks later. So that would be one reservation I would have, but, um, I'm impressed, um, by, by all you've got on here. Looks like a very professional run thing and I think it would draw people down there and, um, be a good addition.
Yeah, I, so I guess my encouragement would be, let's talk some more over the next, if you're willing, I mean, we're open to it, we just, we've got to work on some logistics with some of our, our neighbors. Cause again, I mean, downtown's weird, because it's a business district, but there's also residents and obviously business owners and landowners and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, okay, can I just ask a, a question? Let's say, just hypothetically, that we say, okay, run both festivals, one in May, one in August. The May one, because now you're helping out a local, um, you know, the trap shooting, et cetera, would be receiving funds for their sport or whatever. And then the August one, to have two festivals, does that deter the numbers that you would expect at either one? And so really it just comes down to, and I realize that it, I mean, just hypothetically, not, I, I'm not, you know, I'm active, but I want to hear from you guys. How running, having two festivals, one in May and one in August would affect either or event?
So we don't know how you guys feel, we won't speak for you, but, um, and like, we don't know how this approval process works exactly, or if you guys want to take more time. We feel that it would not benefit the city to have two at all, we think it would be confusing in a lot of ways for a lot of people, whether it's the general public, the city, uh, or even the vendors. Not knowing which one you're, what's, what are you calling your event?
Just Lakeville Food Truck Festival.
Okay, so that's, we had a domain for that, no worries for that, so, um. It might be, it might be confusing, I think, in a lot of ways, so I guess respectfully, we would ask, we would either, how would you go with them?
We'd ask that there be one, basically.
Yeah.
For, and again, for the community.
Yeah.
I just don't think, um, I don't even think Minneapolis could support two of them, if that makes sense.
I had to ask, you know, and this is the first, first time for me as a councilperson, even thinking about some kind of event like this. So, you know, that's why you're at a work session.
Yes, totally.
We have no clue what really it involves and that's, you know, and, um, I would like to get the pros and cons from, the chief doesn't have to put himself on the spot now. But, I mean, if you have a thought process on which way these events would run, which one would be, you know, um, better for the city? Uh, because either way, you know, you've talked about the fact that, you know, you try to keep the costs down for the city. And I'm hoping that you guys would try to figure out a way to keep the cost down for the city too. So, um, I, because Panabrog is usually a joint venture, right? So the city knows they're going to pick up some costs, we kind of donate a lot of money to be able to run the yearly event for Panabrog for the whole community. Um, so anyway, I, I just don't want to ever see us get in a situation where we're having to budget for a food truck festival.
Our event shouldn't have to cost the city anything, you guys should make money off of our events. Uh, we're used to getting invoices in the mail a couple of weeks after our events, we pay for off duty police and fire. And, uh, we bring our own trash, we have warning lights to close all the streets, uh, we work with them intimately to make sure everything's safe. We usually ask the chief of police if this is good, we ask whoever else in the city if this is good, or if we miss something and have to add a barricade. And they let us know, but we, we take that.
Yeah, and we, we build it all day up and take a holiday, down, day up and, um, we like to believe that somebody could drive by the next morning and be like, that event wasn't here, what do you mean?
Well. Did you want to say something?
I just, I, I was, I was just, uh, gonna comment that I don't think that, you know, they're, they're far enough apart. I don't think that there is a problem with having two, two, uh, food truck festivals.
You know, if, if your numbers are more accurate or my numbers are more accurate, we're talking, let's say, my, mine are eight thousand people. That's, that's ten percent of the population of Lakeville alone. Not, not Apple Valley, not Farmington, not Elko, you know, and not, not all that. So, you know, and it, you know, the summer is busy, the school year is busy. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't think it's a problem. And it's, you know, I mean, eighth largest city in, in the state. Uh, so I don't, I don't think it's a problem, you know, I mean, it's, it's twice, it's twice the size of, uh, of, of Hawkins, you know, Lakeville. So, I mean, you guys know those numbers, but, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're a problem. Every, every, uh, every weekend, uh, from spring to fall, we have a food truck festival that has six to eight, ten, uh, ten food, food vendors out there. Those eat far.
No, I realize there's a huge following of people that go to follow their favorite food trucks. So they go to different communities, and I realize that each of these a festival is not gonna bring in just Lakeville people. It's gonna be bringing in people from surrounding communities um, that follow food trucks.
So, um, would you guys be willing, just in the next couple of days, and we can work to connect you there, there doesn't live downtown business association. Listens some feedback from them, and then we can continue this conversation. And then we'll just go from there if that is okay with you. And, yeah, we have a liaison from the council on the DLB day, so we can make sure that they're included.
I suppose the only other question I have is, um, until maybe fire chiefs here, but you know, all of our, all food trucks that come into Lakeville have to be inspected. Um, and, and so it would be a matter of how that would get coordinated that suddenly there could possibly be thirty food trucks that aren't, haven't been to Lakeville. That would have to be inspected, and that puts a burden on the fire. And you guys will work it out.
We make sure everyone knows what permits they need and when they need to have them by. And a lot of the food trucks that are usually are inspected by Lakeville, at least fire for sure. Um, I don't know if you guys have an additional inspection that happened last year. Fire one, um, long before August. We would make sure they have that taken care of. We wouldn't let anybody in our events if they.
We have to provide, so we monitor it, make sure after a certain date if they're not up to where they need to be, then.
Yeah, we might be one of the only cities that actually has a food truck explode, so we're just a little bit. We pay a little bit more attention.
Marty, yes, um, he likes to bring that up a lot. A surprising. I think that's a rare thing.
Um, well, thank you both of you for coming in, our staff, and we'll kind of just, appreciate it. You guys want to take, you want to just hammer through fire relief?
Ready to go? Sir, good, thank you. Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Dan Quan. For those of you that don't know me, president of the Lakeville Fire Relief Association Board. With me, my public vice president, Cam Washington. Julie and Joshua are also very involved with the board. So on behalf of our entire membership, thanks for letting us be here today to participate. Um, and obviously, um, lots of exciting news with respect to the fire department here in the past year. Um, in large part motivated by the safer grant. October. So, you know, this year, the memo that we're proposing doesn't have as many substantive requests or change requests in it. Um, really, there are three things that we wanted to call to your attention, two of which require some action on your behalf. And one is really just informational. So, um, I hope everybody had an opportunity to peruse the memo. Um, and really, the, the first part of it, and I'll call it the most impactful piece, is a proposed change to the best schedule. Uh, we tried to be transparent last year when we were having the same conversation, um, trying to foreshadow that that would likely be a request made this year. Um, and thankfully, uh, as a result of some good market performance, um, the, the fund is very healthy right now. And it's actually becoming unhealthy in the fact that it's overfunded. Um, so one of the ways that we were able to work with our partner, Cliff and Marson, to run the numbers and make sure that this proposal was fiscally sound, um, which it is, and that's highlighted in the appendix. But, um, you know, we, there's really three main reasons for this proposed change. One is to right-size the funding level itself. Two, um, we have nine of our current paid-on qualified firefighters that are gonna be converting to full-time. And under the current, um, vesting schedule of five twenty, a number of them who have put in significant time with the departments are going to, um, take a pretty significant haircut on the pension benefit that they're, they're required to be the fun upon taking a full-time position. So we want to do right by them, and also we're just, you know, realistic of the current dynamics of paid-on qualified firefighter, um, tenure, which is it's pretty rare for people to make it twenty years these days. So we feel like this is a, um, reflective of the current times and what a lot of our neighboring, uh, cities like Lakeville are, are doing. So, um, I'm happy to answer any specific questions on that piece, or would you like me to just work through entirety of it and then field questions?
Uh, we can take it session by session. Okay, yeah. Have you had any conversations internally to say? You know, because as we've all discussed, I mean, our long-term model is to still have hybrid, right? You know, so we don't want a bunch of guys to retire. Do you think, though, at the same time, this may incentivize others to stick around? Because I, I think at one point the average is like seven or eight years. I mean, do you think? Can we stretch some people out a little longer than the seven or eight year? I mean, what's, give me the.
What are they saying? I think part of it fits into, um, the overall long-term vision. This five fifteen, I think we laid out in here, we alluded to our long-term vision, is not our ultimate stopping point. You know, I think eventually, and it's another point we'll hit on, is that we're looking at this, this other type of funding model, which is defined contribution or yeah, defined contribution, right? Um, and maybe changing the best anymore, again, to what Dan said, looking at the reality of what a paid-on qualified firefighter is and setting us up for success in the future. So for the short term, I don't, we, we ask around, it, it's hard to get a straight answer from people, right? Like, no one's gonna tell you, yes, if you drop to fifteen, I'm, I'm gonna leave. Like, no one will tell you that. I think it, it's, being real, realistic about it, it opens the door for some people to leave, so I'm not gonna say that, no, no one's, that, no one's gonna leave. But again, you look at maybe a guy who's at eleven years, now he's looking, okay, can I stretch it out four? So I, I think it's, it's a mix. It's hard to get a straight reaction from people, but I, I think over the course of the last year, it's I've felt better about it. You know, a year ago, I think when we were presenting it, there was that concern. Again, as we're going through the, the significant change of bringing on those first full-time firefighters, this has kind of died down over the past year, so I, I don't think that's as big of a concern.
That's good for you. You guys have some questions about that? I'm fine with the change. I think it makes sense. I look at the numbers, you know, unless, you know, I look at in twenty-six, that the return is at two percent. I just hope that, you know, if, if inflation's a lie and, you know, the market's not doing well, I hope you put in bonds or something to secure over the two percent. But just as long as it's managed well, I'm not as concerned about, you know, the balance, at least the next couple of years. So I'm fine with that. So we, does it, we just, we'll just change it in upcoming meeting?
As long as they're gonna also work on changing that. I just don't, I don't want to ever have to worry about the city having to pony up.
It hasn't happened in the last.
I know. I realize that. I think you guys have done a fantastic job.
No, we, we feel really comfortable about this, and that's like where we start every conversation on this topic is how do we avoid ever having that occur? So.
It was just a couple of years ago that I got nervous and I thought, oh, we're really bordering on edge, but you've done really well with it. And, um, so.
Great, thanks for your support.
We'll hit on it in a minute, but again, again, for long-term, there, the place I want to get to does mitigate that risk. We can get on the second topic and then.
So the second topic, um, so current composition of the board itself, and there's six members from the department. Um, we have four officers, president, vice president, treasurer and secretary. Those are the only compensated roles. We have two trustees that are giving as much to the board, um, in terms of time and effort and thought as any of the four officers. And, um, to date, they have never, those, those two trustee roles have never been compensated. And, um, none of us that are on the board do it for the money. Uh, but it has been increasingly, uh, it, it's become more time-consuming as these, you know, meteoric issues have become ripe. So, uh, we just think that it's only right that our, the two trustees on the board, um, are compensated as well. And just so everybody, I, I can't remember if it's highlighted, no, or not. It's, um, presently speaking, the treasurer and secretary, um, receive three thousand dollars annually. The president and vice president receive a thousand dollars, and then obviously the trustees receive nothing. So last year, on average, we each, um, did about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty hours that we committed to the board. Um, so, uh, you know, you do some simple math and you're not making minimum wage during this, so.
But trustees, traditionally people who are learning to then step into a president role, or they've been president?
Great question. Uh, during my tenure, I, I think that's kind of how it, it was. Um, but, you know, the, the trustees that are in place now are, they've been around as long as Cam and I have been around. Um, one of them's actually was a former officer that's now stepped down into a trustee role. So these are high contributors, um, they're professionals outside of, you know, their support departments, and they bring a lot to the table.
Do they, I mean, is there, what's their job description of your trustee?
Um, you know, I think the way we have our board set up, there's, there's not really defined job description. There is four, I'd say, the president, secretary, um, president, vice president somewhat, but as we've kind of evolved our, our board, we're all delegating tasks to each other, right? Like, one of our trustees does, handles all of our food for the lawful breakfast. He puts in a ton of hours there, and it's, that's just what he's taken on as his role. Um, and so it, it really varies.
Like at, at-large board.
Yeah, and, you know, uh, some of you were present at our banquet this weekend. Um, the, the scholarship that we put together, um, that was spearheaded by one of our trustees, and he's, I mean, they're doing meaningful work.
Can you clarify though, where this money's coming from?
Um, you pay out a special fund, right?
Yes. So it's not from the city's, you know, budget line, uh, that these roles are being paid out of.
So do we really care?
About it, but I mean, it's, we don't have to vote on it.
This is a state thing, uh, so we looked into it. If, um, we would not be asking it if we didn't need your approval, we'll say that. We thought it was a very minor, we were surprised that the state mandated it, but the state mandates that for relief associations, if a trustee is to be compensated, it needs to be approved by the municipality, and so that is why we haven't approved it. I don't understand.
You're talking about the three thousand dollars a year, right?
The trustee would be compensated a thousand dollars.
It's actually four thousand.
Four thousand, yes. Yeah, because, uh, we're.
No, yeah, it's four thousand, man. It's, it's.
You guys first saw, depending on what, what happens tonight and tomorrow, um, we have our relief meeting, which kicks off our vote, and then our members have next week to vote. Uh, which puts us by, um, Monday, the city council meeting to have our votes.
Okay, perfect. So we are, we wouldn't actually officially vote until our, the membership, so we.
Going to take it.
So here's how I see the process plan out. We, we would all say today, but we're not actually voting, so legally, stay what? I don't know how your process, like, I don't know if you can't start your process until our next, next week.
Yeah, we, we vote, and then we don't ratify our vote until you have the final result, until the city council. So that's where our process has always been. Once we present the memo, then we do our vote as a membership, and regardless of what happens there, none of that is valid until it is approved at the city council meeting.
Can you finalize it by the memo on Friday?
Which, it wouldn't be effective until council's meeting.
Let me ask the seminar, and feed us to take a vote first, or you guys?
We. Based on the consensus, whatever we, whatever the consensus is here, we're gonna do a vote this week regardless, so that, yeah.
Okay, I think we're on.
When will that vote be?
The rest of this week, tomorrow through Sunday.
We kick it off. We need to know by Thursday at noon.
To be honest, Jim.
Or Monday.
Got it. Okay.
We will make sure that we expedite it to the best of our abilities today.
Well, let me just say this. I assume you guys are gonna approve it. We will put it on the agenda, and if for some reason you don't, we can pull it, we'll pull it off.
Appreciate that. Good point.
Can I just ask, um, one more? Did you bump the president and vice president just because you were gonna do, um, a trustee? I guess my thought process is, if we were good with three thousand for the treasurer and secretary and a thousand for the president or vice president, and if their roles really aren't gonna be changing much, basically, you could just add the trustees at a thousand each, um, not trying to diminish the roles. But I, I just didn't know if you bumped it up a thousand annually because of the titles.
Part of it was to get some separation from the roles, but as, as an example, Dan and I, president and vice president, we're here tonight. So then, as we said, that everyone's coming to. There are some increased responsibilities with the officer role, so there is some separation there.
Because I imagine the treasurer and secretary have a lot more like.
They have huge roles.
Not often, see the treasurer and secretary pay more than.
Yeah.
At the extra.
Their accountability.
My, my guess is that the reason that they have us weigh in is that there was probably some, they had pensions somewhere that was paying a ton of money, and the state said, well, we'll fix that by making every city.
That's, that's because the funds are coming from the payments, or their salaries are coming out of the special fund, which in turn.
Right.
The city has a liability out of that special fund.
So we go through budget cuts.
Okay, so I think you, we came around to the solution on that one.
And then the, the last topic is really just informational at this point. Cam, uh, alluded to it, but, um, we do think that the, the best result for our membership will be at some point converting from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. Um, there's ample precedent for this with other departments that have gone through similar transitions like the one we're going through. But it's not ripe for conversation today. We still need to, you know, we're working with some consultants to get smart fast. But, um, we've told our membership that this is something that we're looking into and we're committing resources to. But, um, it isn't something that, there's any ask tied to it today for council. Do you want to add anything about? Uh, your point about how that mitigates things and some of their concerns, I think is worth touching.
Yeah, I guess I can just give a really high level, and I know. Yeah, I guess I can just give a really high level and I know, um, I've been working with, we've been working with, uh, someone that I used to work with on the department. I think some of you might have met him. I think, uh, you spoke with his wife as well. Um, so you've been a big consultant for us, but basically the, the overview of the defined contribution plan. Again, is that it takes that fund that the city is currently on the hook for and it distributes that to the active members. And then going forward is that state fire aid money that is being distributed to the active paid on call members. So no longer does the city have this fourteen million dollar fund that they're backing. It is, Dan has a fund, I have a fund and it's all in a market account that can grow or shrink with the market. So it's no longer, it's our, our off the hook for that fund. It can never drop below a hundred percent because there's no fund to, to be backed, so. That's the, the, the big difference between the two.
And other cities that we've talked to have seen good success partnering with the city in terms of how those state funds are. In fact, allocated between membership and the city itself.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, the state funds are meant to go toward retirement of firefighters. It doesn't say paid on call. So um, we also now have full time and so the partnership is a great way to say, we need to come up with some sort of allocation between. How much of that's going to continue to go to the paid on call firefighters and then toward our para responsibilities as an employer of the full time.
Right?
Good. So we're going to keep it warm.
Yeah.
Thanks for sticking through the first two.
Thanks for letting us be here.
Now, sure, we can, we appreciate it. First take a brief, um, break. I know you guys have been sticking around for the housing, you know, the five minutes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about, um, some ordinance work that we've talked to the planning commission about in December. Um, this all started with a meeting that the mayor requested and convened on August twenty-sixth with several of our local builders. Just talk about some of what is getting put into the different legislation that we've seen over the past couple of years. And try and have a early conversation with our builders as to what they see would be some of the kind of low hanging fruit, easy things that we could adjust. Um, some of these are, are pretty minor adjustments, um, that could result in some cost savings. So we asked Dan Licht, our planning consultant over the years, to put a summary together and kind of define these. I'm not going to go into the minutia that this memo does. Um, and I will preface this that he knows these ordinances better than I do. I've been here two and a half years, but I still don't know the zoning code for it and backwards. But I will, you know, attempt to answer all of your questions. But Dan did a nice job in the memo of just putting together the history of the zoning ordinances and where some of this stuff stemmed from, why it was created. And then trying to touch on why we're considering, um, some minor changes now. So I'm just gonna go kind of topic by topic. We can talk about them at each topic or I could go through it and then we could go back, whatever you desire. I'll just start with the first one, attached garages. Um, so we require obviously in our zoning districts, a minimum, um, for garage size. Um, there are many cities out there that don't address this at all. They just assume market is gonna drive what buyers want. And, you know, adequate garages will be provided. Um, some cities will just say to accommodate two cars, but they don't, um, attempt to. Um, require a minimum width or minimum size. Uh, we do both, um, for a single family and, um, should be two family. And then detached townhomes and attached townhomes. So the big difference in Lakeville is for quite a while, we've had an increase in requirement for those homes without a basement. And again, it's for that very reason, you want to accommodate a two car garage, you want to be able to accommodate, um, storage space. So the thought process was to increase that from four eighty, four forty to five forty additional space for that garage. When we talked to the builders, um, I didn't get a lot of cost data from many builders. I asked for them to provide it after the fact and everybody holds that stuff so close to the chest. But it was roughly a three to five, up to six thousand savings if we were to go down to, um, four forty for all townhomes. Um, again, the thought process there is you're buying a townhome, you know what the garage size is. You have vehicles that can be accommodated in that garage size and you handle your storage. That's the thought process.
Are you finding from builders, if they want to weigh in, to the attached townhome, are you finding empty nesters and they've got so much stuff, they're probably getting rental units anyway?
Yes, I would say so, for sure.
So this is one thing that the planning commission supported in terms of the reduction, but keeping the minimum. So we do require a twenty-two or in a townhouse, a twenty foot minimum width, and that's measured on the interior. So that was the conclusion that the planning commission came up with, um, to share that with you, you know? We can discuss this one now or I can cover all of them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go section by section. Anybody have any input on the garages? Yeah, I mean, fine, other than cars are getting bigger. The, the five forty is very generous, so. Yeah. Kind of like we talked about at that meeting, it really increases the building pad size and it just really impacts overall cost of the house. Okay, so that seems like we have consensus on that change.
All right, residential buffer yards. This one still confuses me. It's written in the ordinance. But basically, um, some older ordinances really trying to push for, um, any type of, um, higher density, getting into the townhomes again to. Have buffer yards when you're adjacent to busier streets and it makes sense. You want to have screening, you want to buffer those areas. Further enhancements to the ordinance really dug into the height of that requirement, so pushing for requiring berms. Which then reduces the, in the amount of land needed or increases the amount of land needed. I think I typed that out wrong. And then reduces the amount of buildable area. As soon as you're bringing the berm up, you're just, um, you're wasting buildable land. And so in talking to the builders, um, again, a lot of the conversation is about how to use land most efficiently. And knowing that we're going to be faced with a little bit of increased intensity, three and a half is certainly better than four. Um, reducing the amount of buildable land is going to have an impact on that. And so the council or the planning commission talked about, um, acknowledging that, also acknowledging that people know where you're buying. If you're buying on a busier frontage street, you know where you're going to have more noise. Um, again. Um, some buyers are smarter than others to do their homework and understand that, but is it the job of the ordinance to protect that? And so the commissioners discussed exploring this. Um, I don't have a specific solution, but just trying to get our arms around just the amount of that required buffer. To save some more land for construction.
But is the required buffer also a safety thing? If you're off on a busy street and you have a berm and you're gonna suddenly go into the ditch or some, you know, your car. Is, doesn't that protect?
It could. Yep.
I mean, I, I guess, I'm not. And I assume it also helps with noise.
It certainly does.
Um, but. I guess, uh, from a safety point of view, I'd rather have us look at it a little bit more. I, I realize that, you know, that's not what the builders would like, but. For safety reasons.
I'd say both sides of that point though, too, is that the buffer, you know, does add some screening. And uh, again, the sound piece of it, yeah, I'm a little bit on both sides of this because it just makes for a nicer development. And not obviously a nicer customer experience ultimately.
Well, and I guess it's not just the car crashes, it's the exposure. So for, you know, um, suddenly. Does it, for a safety perspective, does it, um. Does it, if it, if the homes are more exposed, does that get enticed criminal, criminal activity? So.
All very good points.
And.
We can take a look at that.
And I agree, but for a different reason. It's just that I don't think homeowners, especially in a new build. Know what that traffic's going to look like, uh, after completion. And some of our material roads aren't even complete, uh, aren't through streets yet. Um, so that traffic will.
From, from a townhome, no experience that, that I've seen, it, the, the majority are buying finished units. At the end, it's, it's pretty, it, pre-sale, pre-selling in a townhome is a lot more challenging than a single family home. So most, most of the people are going out, they're walking into a finished home and they're really knowing what they're doing.
I agree that, that's true. That's true. It's that the, the adjacent neighborhoods, what I, I'm thinking Lakeville specific, what's left to be built? And where our county roads are going to, uh, connect to in the future. Some of those, those plans, I want to make sure that there are protections with berms and screening for when that traffic does increase in the future.
Hundred percent.
So that's, I don't know. I, I had some issue with the buffer yard changes.
Well, what I will say on this is we're not under a deadline. This is us to have a conversation, figure out what makes sense. We're not being forced by the legislature today. And to be honest, I don't know how much I want to do before the legislature really gets kind of finalized to know what it's going to look like. Cause I may not be as friendly if we get a bunch of mandates. Not that I think there's going to be, but you're.
Yeah. Well, and I, you know, and from a staff perspective, we're not married to any one thing. Um, in any of these, so you're not hurting my feelings by pushing it out. We're just, we just picked out things that do have an impact. On, can, you know, whether it be construction, that comes with a cost, changing that, um, buildable area. That can increase, um, depending on what's changed, could make way for a few more units. All of that helps the bottom line in terms of why be the fire pool. We're not married to any one of these.
Well, I, I want to help them too. It's just that I, I want to find the right balance.
Exactly.
For the right purpose.
Yep. No, that makes sense. So well.
With this section, is this specifically regarding townhomes?
Um, no, it, all of the different districts to some degree, depending on what you are either abiding, um, has an impact. So it would be single family and townhomes.
Cause they, we live on a major road. There was no fence in our backyard along that lava. And the, uh, privacy fence solved the noise, it solved the, uh, people looking in. Um, it solved the lighting. I mean, I think we see past that thing now is what a fire. So I mean, I, I, I think there are options because I do agree. I mean, it's like you kind of know where, we knew that. We bought the house. It's like, we'll see how it goes and it didn't go very well, not bad. So we thought the solution, but it wasn't like we're going in blind and I certainly, I'm not sure. Well, it's an eight foot, it's a eight foot fence. I'm, I'm not sure a ten foot, what, what a ten foot buffer.
So question for your, uh, over on two hundred fifth street, what's it, do you know, have any idea what you had to do or what you lost?
I, on two hundred and fifth, I don't think much was lost at all with the, the burning.
Okay. So if you're gonna go ten feet up, how wide is that? If you're gonna do a ten foot berm, yeah, I'll.
You're gonna have three to one on, on each side, so it, yeah. At the end of the line, you could be three to one slow.
It's not a ten, no, it's a combination of trees and berm.
Okay.
So most of the time, it's a three or four foot berm and then you've got landscaping on top of it.
Yeah.
They got the difference.
Yeah. All right.
Good thing, Bill.
We can look at that one a little bit further.
Yep. Okay, single lot, um, family lot requirements. Um, so the little table, you can see what our different, um, lot size requirements are. Um. In twenty-ten RS four was created, um, to create kind of that first small lot, single family district. And RS four is at eighty-four hundred square feet. Then further changes were made after Spirit's PUD and Avon Lee to kind of create in the ordinance, the ability to do this without a PUD. And that was in the RST two. So by right, it follows the RS four with the eighty-four hundred square feet. With a conditional use permit, you can have up to, you can have lots at seventy-five hundred square feet or fifty-five feet in width. Um, so that again is with a conditional use permit. Then with that, there's a whole bunch of other little rules within the ordinance that become very complicated for developer to figure out. Become cumbersome for staff. Um, those bullet points are there. Um, it's a lot of, um, averaging. Um, it's limited, only thirty-five percent of the development, only developments of a hundred acres or greater. And again, it's by a CUP, so a developer has to jump through that extra hoop. And so when we were talking to builders, um, suggestion was, um, can we in the RST two, by right, go down to that seventy-five hundred square feet? Um, and not have to jump through all of those hoops, so have an entire development, be able to have that lot size and have that flexibility. One of the things that staff has concern over with that idea is making sure that the development is still designed well. When you have a lot of small lots and the streets are really straight, all you're gonna see running down that street are gonna be the driveways and the fronts of garages. You're not gonna see that, um, change, um, with the varying lot size in a development. So we would have to, if we were to explore this change, have standards that are put into the ordinance that would help us prevent that from happening. And then work closely as we go through preliminary plaque review. The planning commission supported that idea. Um, again, seeing the merits of, um, the flexible lot size, that is probably one of the number one things that. We do hear the legislature, we do get hammered on is lot size. Lakeville certainly allows that flexibility now. Um, but by making a few of these tweaks, we could make that easier to do, um, both on the developer's side. As well as, um, city staff in reviewing the plans. I don't have, I don't know if you came with cost information on the difference in the lot size going from an RS three. Um, to an RS four to seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, but it, it certainly does come with cost.
Yes, speed of curve, curve basically.
Yep.
It, uh, it, that, that one is a big deal.
I think this, the garage.
As well as being able just to, if it's a margin of a bit more units.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Density. You're able to put more units, same amount of land.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in this direction, you know, based on the feedback from the planning commission, but I'd want to figure out exactly what some of these things you were talking about, you know, about. Specifics or whatever in your.
A good example of it.
Makes me sad.
A good example though is like, I think in our ordinance, we encourage or require curved linear streets. You know, we don't have a lot of grid street. Mm-hmm. Type of designs, you know, those are the kind of things that I think we'd want to be sure we retain. A good example is, I forget, what's the name of the new, an R one that just came in?
Cedar Hills North.
Cedar Hills North.
Yeah, that took five times.
When that first came in, I mean, it was, it was just a grid. I mean, you know, so. And not to say developers are lazy, but they're gonna try, some developers are going to want to try to pack as much in the easiest way. You know, nears, straight line. Um, and so it just takes some effort from, from us to try to make it have a little bit of character.
Just works so well to use the existing geography of a neighborhood, you know, to curb streets around these things. Makes for just a much nicer neighborhood.
I think the only thing I get sad about is I'm spoiled. I have a, you know, huge backyard, you know? But I realize that that's also something that the buyer has to consider.
Just.
You know, and I realized that you're gonna, that, you know, that they're gonna be able to buy a less expensive. House because they're in a jam packed neighborhood. Um, but hopefully that they only live there five years and move on up in our city. But you know, I mean, that, that's theirs, theirs, that's their, and that, and that's true, not everybody wants maintenance, but. I'm telling you, just having the space and not having your neighbor right on top of you is like something that. It's kept me in my house for forty years.
Just with changing demographics to aging population, you know, people just starting out. It's, it's nice to have that product diversity that you can be in a smaller home with a smaller yard, maybe no maintenance. There's a lot of movement in that direction.
What's it look though, twenty years later?
It hopefully will be more cracks than affordable housing, even that, you know, depends on what appreciation does in real estate. But hopefully it just continues to be either that first home or the last home for people. Cause they either age out or.
There's, but there's less trades, right? So I mean. There's, but there's less trades, right, so I mean, I guess, I, I, I just, I'm wondering. Does it have a tendency after twenty years to look rundown?
Oh, that, that's a hard question to answer, you know, depending on the neighborhood. No, no, I understood, and I'm, I'm just saying that it depends on, is it association maintained, where are the rules of the neighborhood? As far as spirit goes, I'll refer to spirit. The homes, I mean, there's some now that are twenty years old, and there's a lot that we had built in there that are now thirteen years old, and again, the neighborhood still looks unbelievable, just from the neighborhood standards.
Guarantees that the city have that by making these zoning ordinance changes, we're gonna get more affordable homes.
What guarantees will smaller lots in the amount of curb that you have is going to be a developed, less expensive.
Big home on a small lot, but, well, you're restricted by, you know, what setbacks are.
In the one that we're working on in Ritter, I mean, that, that is a thirty-five foot wide hole, you know. Current square footage is from a groundler that has, we have one that, that is twelve hundred square foot on the main. You know, and then you have basement two, up to, we're developing a plan that's twenty-seven hundred square feet, that's made in upper. So it, it definitely, by having a smaller home, I mean, like, just share base costs with you on it. They are way more affordable, and having something that is either fifty feet wide or sixty feet wide, a ton more cost. Everything, everything that I basically see now, um, with our larger homes, just the sticks and bricks costs are, you know, from three hundred, five, and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand. The homes that we're working on in Ritter, basically the base cost of the home is down in the low twos, basically up to three hundred. So just by taking a smaller lot.
But you're selling those for what then?
That's the cost to construct, so a- after all, and I think I share the base. They're in the, they're in the forms yet.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we're kidding ourselves, so we had a conversation with the builders that we're kidding ourselves that even these lander changes are necessarily really gonna result in, when some would either receive us that most important starter hole, you know, trying to get down to three, three fifty. Maybe in townhomes it could, but the way it was described and supported by the builders, it brought, it's still lowering it a little bit, broadens the buyer pool, so more people are able to, to buy. It's still not, I mean, we're not kidding ourselves, we're not gonna still be building that starter hole that everyone.
When you're talking, you were including the price of land. No, I, that's just, that's for sticks and bricks, the land is a whole other thing. I mean, it, when I started thirteen years ago, with something that, uh, sales price is right around four hundred thousand, this was a blue up home. You know, these same homes now today, um, and I'm, I'm including every, everything that we're doing. Our average sales price on our larger stuff was, uh, eight twenty-five. You know, and that, that's crazy, I mean, thirteen years, that is, that's, that's crazy amount, obviously, as far as profit margin, it, it's not that much. It's just what, material and labor, and you know, and land. And everything that, you know, it costs to bring it to market, that's kind of what we provide, so. How refreshing it is for me to actually look at my direct cost and see something that's two twenty-five, I mean, that's amazing. It's a, it's a really nice home for what it costs.
So, and then in my mind, you have the land, you have the bill, and you have the finish.
Yep.
And, you saw in that two hundred and some thousand dollar house on a smaller lot.
Yep.
Is that getting finished in a way that's gonna make it more affordable too?
Yeah, it really looked, most all builders, and this is kind of where everyone's at, because everyone knows the affordability thing. We, we all got real spec heavy, where as far as what's included in the home, how much stuff is included in the home. Really, we need to bring it down, get a base house that is affordable, let people add in what they want. You know, it, do you, you want the window there, you need to necessarily include that, or are you just giving it away? You know, that, that helps by just really looking at what spec level you're putting in, you know, from cabinets. This is gonna sound ridiculous, but how many drawers that you have, it's, it's just, it all just adds up, yeah, it really does.
When we talked about this in August, and this to your work, and shared in, you know, those homes, you go in, you know, it's, you have four or five different color schemes that you can choose from. And then with that, you choose, and it basically suited around the cabinets, and then with that, they have the matching granite, the flooring and so forth. If you come up with another option that doesn't include the granite, so it's got, you know, what you call, we're used to like laminate, um, and so they've added that choice into their small, single family in Brookshire to help address that, because, I don't, I don't know what their sales.
We haven't done that.
Yeah, and not everybody is, they, they were the first, um, of that group, they, they did share that, and, um, but, you know, across the board, and, you know, Justin kind of brought it up during the last legislative, um, session. Um, one of the builders on one of these fifty-five foot lots, the house was still five, it was like five forty. And then you read the design, or you read the description of the parade of homes, and it's got all the luxury finishes, so, you know. Is this, you know, some of these, is it gonna stop that behavior, or change that behavior, no? Um, it would be nice if, if housing first did something to kind of check their own membership, um, I'm just that kind of thing, but um, I'm not kidding myself, and I don't think the planning commission is, is thinking that this is gonna radically change that, because it's not going to.
But it will help.
Yeah, it's little baby steps. Okay, so I'm hearing some consensus on this idea as we flush it out with some development and standards. Okay, all right, baseline setbacks, this is a little bit like the buffer thing, but a little bit different. Um, most of our townhomes are done with, uh, unit and base lot configuration. And so we have this requirement that then we have a thirty foot setback from the perimeter of the development, so that you have that thirty feet, and then the development, the, the buildings, whether it's detached or attached, around that whole base lot. And so there was some discussion about reducing that a little bit, maybe down to twenty feet, to create more available land. And then the ordinance is confusing from district to district regarding the setback between the different homes. Um, there's a whole slew of different things that are, Dan written up, that I did not include in the PowerPoint. And so the idea is just to create some consistency, refine some of the requirements a little bit, but still have those distances. Um, but just in a little bit smaller way, or, um, less distance way, and then have greater consistency across the districts, so that if someone has, um, you know, across the board, they're not going from one district to the other and not understanding, you know. It just gets confusing, and so this one is really more, a little bit more housekeeping, um, with also the goal of creating a little bit more available area. This one is probably the, the simplest and less intense ask.
Uh, the only thing I was trying to figure out is, does this essentially shorten the driveways?
No, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't impact the interior of the lot, it's more of the distance that's required at the perimeter. So it wouldn't change the driveways.
It would change distance between houses.
It could. We've got fourteen feet of most of the districts, and one is at twenty feet. Dan went into that with a little bit more detail than I'm doing here. But just part of the problem too is the ordinances have evolved so many times. Um, codification causes some problems or lack of codification. Um, I think one of the things we'd like to do after we get through the next round of complaints is simplifying our zoning districts. Reducing the number of residential zoning districts, um, which will help a lot.
Yeah, the, the fourteen and fifteen feet is really consistent now across. Seems to kind of be the minimum center, the most we see is the seven five, it's seven five, so the top fifteen feet between structures. Good.
All right, the next one is exterior materials, again, this has also evolved, um, over the years. Um, there's requirements that were standardized in two thousand, um, that created exterior finishes for detached townhomes and townhome, um, attached townhomes. Again, the intent is, is, um, to main, make sure that these structures are built to, um, allow for long-term, minimize long-term maintenance, particularly on attached. Um, at one time, um, Chris Jensen was telling me that HOAs were required to cover exterior maintenance on detached townhomes as well as attached, that has changed. A detached townhome is really no different than a single family home. Um, and so it's one of the things that we want to talk about, um, but you can see the requirements, um, on the screen. Again, uh, this is something that the builders are pretty passionate about. Um, and again, one of the requirements that we really want to zero in on is the challenge between requirements applying to detached townhomes. Um, we're seeing more and more of these in our developments, these are homes that are designed, look, feel, operate like a single family home, but they're plated like a townhome. And our single family zoning districts have zero exterior material requirements. Zero, but our detached townhomes have that whole slew of requirements. And so one of the things that builders would like us to consider is reducing the requirements um, and or remove the requirement for the brick or stone. A lot can be done with design, with variety of LP siding, Hardy board siding in different textures, um, different patterns that really do a good job of breaking up a house without mandating the brick or stone. We could start with a change that just addresses the detached townhomes, see how that works, and then consider it in our larger attached townhome buildings. The difference there is the larger attached townhomes do have an HOA that cover maintenance, um, typically. So again, the planning commission was supportive of learning more about this, um, this is pretty much the main reason Paul is here tonight. Again, the builders are very passionate about this one, there's a lot of costs, and you can explain it better than I can, that goes into the requirement for brick or stone. Um, and cost savings is between twelve and fifteen thousand. And so Paul was able to share some examples, um, again, this is probably more, most familiar to you in spirit. Um, but you can see every single one of these homes, there's no brick or stone. But it is a variety of LP siding, and that siding is done in shake style, board pattern, um, vertical, horizontal to break up the finet, to break up that exterior design. Um, trim is also more effective on Hardy, you can do the wider trim, um, the different colors and so forth. More specifically, and what's relevant now, is what's happening on, um, Ritter Meadows. And so, Robert Townes bought all of the detached townhomes that are going into all those lots that are going in Ritter Meadows. And again, these are the detached townhomes, it's a single family. And so you can see on the left and then the right, um, the change in the home front with that mandate to add the stone. And you can see, in my view, um, in my opinion, on your, on the left, with a variety of LP or Hardy, whichever material you choose, you can still have a really nice looking front, um, that has character, um, you know, design elements and so forth. And then I didn't pull up all your pictures that you provided, but here is another example of a one story. And again, the difference, you know, it's like the, the brick, they're faced with pay twenty-five percent, where am I gonna put it? So they slap it around the garage. Um, again, you can explain where those extra costs come from, it's certainly not just material, but the labor. Uh, but this is something that, um, I think does result in tangible, um, cost savings to the homes. And at a minimum, we'd like to start with addressing this with our single family detached, because again, our one, our two, our three, any of our regular single family residential districts, there are no design standards.
So, couple questions, I mean, what do you mean, the stuff on the left was fine, I wanted to develop an ordinance that, you know, had, my like question is, there seems, and I don't know enough, but, there's this working group in the legislature about HOAs, and what's the future of that? So I'm curious about what type of impact state changes to HOAs would have on long term. Just curious, I, I just have no idea that it's impacted as a path, I don't know, are you part of this working group? I just, keeps getting a loop to everything I go to, but I have no idea what it means.
Just on the board of housing first, so I think I'll probably start to learn a little bit more of some of this stuff. With, with this, where, where the majority of the cost came, our original plan, you know, was to, to not use the stone, and kind of like we'd done in, in spirit, and honestly, on the backs and sides to use a vinyl, matching vinyl, we've got a lot of examples around the cities where the vinyl, you, you really don't see between, between the structures, and it honestly matches up really well. Um, between the L, requiring the LP, or do, I forget the number. All stone around the whole entire foundation, that was a, a monster cost. Uh, just by doing this, by adding back in the LP, and by putting the stone on, it was roughly, you know, twelve to four, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars in cost, additional, and what, you know, I had done is I established a base price for Ritter without any of it, you know, just to make the adjustments, and I, I didn't put any margin on the cost, I just put fourteen of, of, of costs, and then I upped the, upped the sales price fourteen, so it's not, like, we're benefiting off it. And to me, to have this as an option, if people would like to pick it, you know, and add that, or, you know, it is something they want, or something they may not want, you, you could, I mean, both sides look all right, but even the stuff on the right, you know, around the garage starts to look a little heavy.
So one of the things that we would do is add as an option, a variety of, um, so still require the LP, Hardy, that kind of size, so you still have the durability, but have a choice, either do the brick, or you incre- increase the amount of siding styles, so, or textures, shapes. So that you still have that break, um, in the building, it's particularly important, you know, when you're getting into the two stories, so. Um, that is the type of wording that we would add to that, is that choice.
Aesthetically pleasing.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't want to have all just straight lab, yeah, on the whole thing, by ha- having two or three different siding styles on it, it, uh, it's, it's definitely helps the aesthetics. Maybe look at, word in something.
I'm gonna speak on that subject anytime you're ready. Thanks for, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight, um. I anticipated the response that I'm listening to tonight on the detached, and so, uh, so that I won't speak in great length of that. First of all, why did this get, get established in the ordinance to begin with? That's because the townhomes that were being built at that time, and historically had been built in Valley Park, and and like, the townhomes across from City Hall, built at a time when we didn't have Hardy's siding. And we had, I would call inferior products that whipped water, and the conditions that we observed as a staff, um, in the older neighborhoods um, were causing great financial impacts on HOAs to deal with the conditions that had to be addressed. Literally reciting whole neighborhood, whole HOAs. And were great, had great adverse impacts on those living there, and in some instances, literally forced them because they couldn't afford the substantial HOA monthly fees that followed to what um, House Member, uh, Michelle said, that woke, said, referenced to me. So, that got adopted, and if you drive around the community, look at the units that have the brick, stone product requirement. Primarily, you see on the photos, they were around garage doors, and they were. and they were in the backyards along the base of the backyard, of the base of the house. And why was that? And it was because we determined that HOAs have maintenance in the way of lawn care, snow removal, and they take their toll on siding. And so the ordinance, which has been in effect now for 20 years, if you just drove around and looked at the units built in the last 20 years ago, you'll see that they're in great condition and there's no deterioration occurring structurally as a result of private contractors, snow plowing, weeding, and all as part of the HOA process. I speak, it's not just former Vice President of the ARD in Minnesota, who was totally responsible for all the establishment of all new HOAs. But I speak to it as a resident in Lakeville who's lived in HOA townhomes for 20 years. 10 years Boulder Village, 10 years at Bellanti. The first resident to live in both those neighborhoods. And president of HOAs for most of those 20 years. Responsible for budgeting and responsible for the HOA fees. Today, the greatest problem for HOAs is insurance costs have gone exponential and is creating some real challenges, especially for retired persons in these townhome settings, which, which are the types of residents that are primarily attracted to them. And that's pretty well-known. Very few residents live within either of those neighborhoods to this day. Probably less than three or two, two or three in each of those 84-unit facility, buildings, projects. So I'm a strong advocate, and what's not happening here is we're not talking to the HOAs. And I'm concerned about that, and I want you to know that this community, the quality of the housing and the ability for it to be maintained at the level that they've been maintained for 20 years, they still have the same siding, they still have the same brick, stone, et cetera, masonry. Masonry, and they've held up beautifully. And it speaks vibes to the community and the ability for resale and the ability for the quality aesthetic look that we were seeking in the community. And I must, and I believe that if you spoke with HOAs, or took the opportunity, not just to talk to the builders, I respect what's being presented here tonight. And for the most part, can agree with many of the things that have been said based on that, those, that meeting with the builders. But I can agree on the exterior materials because I believe it's the foundation. That's a right word, by the way. It's the foundation for long-term condition preservation. And if you look at either of those neighborhoods, especially Bellanti's good examples, nearly, it's nearly 20 years now since that, that was constructed. They haven't had to spend any money, they haven't spent any money on anything related to the foundation structural or exterior siding, zero. And if they had to spend that, it would be extraordinary expense and a burden. And it, and it would work against the value of HOA and the aesthetics that they provide Lakeville. So, um, see if I missed anything. Oh, road control, oh, the city of Lakeville requires, man, it requires irrigation for HOA tunnels, correct? And that water, historically, before we had this ordinance, was a automatic contributor to wicking. I don't care what, what kind of siding you have, it's, it's not an ideal situation. So the irrigation requirement is another factor that was taken into consideration when we required, when David required or recommended the, the provision that's in the current ordinance. Today, townhomes in Lakeville run from 400,000 upwards to a million dollars. Can you imagine? Upwards to a million dollars. And Bellanti today, they're selling for 700,000 to, to a million dollars depending on the unit. And by the way, now, what was missed in this presentation, that's not a criticism, it's just an observation, is that the side yard setbacks on the detached townhomes has been dramatically reduced. So the newest example of that would be that the townhomes detached along, just immediately north of LDS Church, you know where I'm speaking? And look at the narrow side yards, and those side yards with runoff are very challenging for the foundations and how water can't escape that as easy as they were in the townhomes that were previously built, which, which doubled the side yard setbacks that, that we have today. So more density allows more units, allows more profit for the builder, but it doesn't take into account the value of this provision, which is a insurance to the problems that can and previously occurred without it. So I, I still, I still am contacted by my former HOAs for input and ideas. And that's because of professional relationships and personal relationships. And I would, at the time, this, this was ordinance public hearing, I would talk to the HOAs and bring this to their attention because I don't think they support this. I don't, I think they understand the merits of this provision and the value that they've realized because of that, that, that instruction.
Well, in this case, I'm talking about detached townhome.
That's what I'm talking about. Absolutely.
Yeah, we're really only focusing on.
Bellanti is all, is all.
The main, the main way that, again, you run the stone, if something's installed wrong, stone wicks up, which are the same way that if you install siding wrong. And one, one way we've gotten around is the maintenance drip. And that's a much cheaper requirement, you know, than putting stone on where you would have, basically, you cover your drip line. You may have two feet of edging, which also, that way you're not putting your sprinklers right up next to the foundation. You're actually providing kind of a buffer, a barrier for the damage that we would have been.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we didn't have any final on this, and I, I think there's more to learn about the products. I point out too, when we changed the ordinance for IV when there were other gas stations, right? So we had, our old ordinance required straight-up brick. And they say, well, there's this new product, and we learned a lot. So I think there's a lot of us to learn about construction materials. Bob, you make a great point. I think there's a, there's a medium in there that we'll be able to find today, but we'll.
On these, obviously, you know, it's not an HOA that's responsible for the exterior of the home. It would be.
Yep. And a lot of it is, has to do with the front elevation. So we're not saying you still don't have to do the LP or Hardy. That's allowed in the ordinance today. What we're saying is this addition of to just put bricks somewhere versus having a mix of different styles of LP or Hardy, whichever product they choose. You can get this, we're focusing more on design than durability because we're not moving the requirements for the durable materials. And that was, I should have probably made that very clear. It's more of the aesthetic requirement of forcing brick to be added somewhere for the sake of an ordinance.
If you look at, if you look at the rear of the, of the townhomes today, under this ordinance, this is a good example of the, the, the value of this brick and stone, mostly brick, at this location, and then the entire back of the house. And it really makes a difference in the. Ruptures, in terms of structural integrity and the lack of required maintenance and the expense of the HOA fees.
Yeah, that's not a requirement right now in our current detached townhomes. The way the ordinance requires, right here.
You can pick on either or.
Yep. It's that fourth bullet, gives flexibility. So what we're proposing is really, um, the exception on the front and giving more flexibility on the design on the front.
I understand.
So we're still mandating the durable materials around all four elevations, but not mandating.
Certainly, any even durable material installed correctly will, will be destroyed by whatever. So let's have more conversation.
All right, and you're going to keep moving, sorry. Okay, the last one is our PUD acreage minimum for low-density developed areas. So those areas guided low-density on the land use plan. The minimum requirement is to, in order to utilize a PUDs, 320 years. We're getting into more parcels west of 35. Not going to have that kind of acreage. But we also might want to use the community as a tool. Again, cooperation with the developer, not a mandate, as we're getting accused by the legislature. So we need to reduce or remove that threshold so that PUDs are more available in our remaining developable property.
That's fine.
All right. It is there, you mentioned earlier, Mayor, concern over timing to work on some of these changes.
We have plenty of time.
Obviously, our builders would like to see some of these changes made sooner than later. What is the desire of the council? I just have to ask, because, I mean.
Well, I think the ones that we, I, I don't think we, any of us were opposed to where the, when the planning commission supported it. So those ones are prioritized, that we can work through this quickly. The ones where I think we had hesitation, the commission had hesitation, we should continue to work on. Again, you know. Let's just do it, let's do it right. I don't want to rush into something, just to rush into something.
Okay.
We just appreciate you listening.
Yep.
Yeah.
So homeowners association, is there a requirement that they have to stay in association forever?
If any of them are written, yes, the answer is yes. I don't know of any exception to that.
It's a self-exception. These detached ones, it would, I think, be impossible because you have so much common space between. You just have basically the box and everything else.
Especially those of them that now have community building.
And I think there's two questions there. There's the question of how long do they have to be around and how long do they.
Are they around?
Are they around?
No.
There's some, there's some that.
It's not as many functional.
I mean, you go around a city and you'll see old entry monument signs that have the name of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it says an HOA or something like that. And they have a quick HOA dues in years. So it, it depends on how active they are and how well they are managed.
But I think the market, though, is really driving a lot of community space that we'll require.
Right.
Playgrounds, yeah, community building pools.
We don't have any authority though. They're created, they're their own entity, they're their own little mini-city.
Yeah. Just want a clarification on which ones are occurring, like which ones will bring it back.
Okay, I think we were okay with projects. The buffer, we're going to have more conversation about. Single-family lot, we're okay with. Setbacks, we're okay with. More conversation about exterior material. We need to have, find out what the right number for acreage on PUDs is. We did not talk about.
Thank you.
That was still unknown, wasn't it?
Yeah, planning commission did not want to entertain those.
And, and I would just say, that is very likely a place that my colleague, Mayor, in our city, are really compromised the legislature on. So we may want to just wait and see what happens before we spend time doing the ordinance, because it may be for not.
Here, I don't see that there's a major demand for it yet. There's just not enough people.
No, really, the, yeah.
We have a certain allowance for them right now, certain areas.
But they, they, they don't really make financial sense unless you build them when you build them.
Right. And you have enough setback.
Right.
It wouldn't work on every lot.
It's, again, not as, stuff people are bringing up at, at this time.
Right, so there was a proposal last year that setbacks didn't matter, that they were going to require by right, which was a concern of the day and the time.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Let's cruise over to talk about bonds. Excuse your patience.
Mayor, council members.
So they're managing your comp time.
We have Jessica Green here with us tonight, Managing Director at Northland. I'm just going to go through quickly our, the bond structure, and then I'll just get deep dive into any more details with that. We are looking at the bond issuance being roughly 23 million. Five million of that is the street reconstruction portion, which is a 10-year length. And then the CIP portion or project portion, 18 million, and that's 20 years. That is for the first center. So when I'm looking at those costs of the first center, you know, you're all very well aware of how much is getting funded through the federal and state money. Construction costs, right now, we're estimating at 25 million, roughly. I'm rounding up. So, and then with those roughly $8 million in the state and the federal money, brings us down to our 18 million that we would have to bond for. And as you're all aware, the intent of the city was to have those franchise fees cover the principal interest on the first station, and then these fire stations that'll be coming along. So that's it in a nutshell. So I'll just talk about the, by the way, the bond, the bid opening on the first center is January 30th. So we'll have a time after those bids are received if we need to re-tweak that portion of the bond. We definitely will have time. So.
Can I ask a question about the structure of them?
Yep.
So part of the conversation when we were talking about franchise fees was if, let's say we can do the bill a lot, we collect more franchise fees anticipated, are we able to accelerate the payback? Or, or how, how does that kind of work on? On that, because I know in the first years I was a council, there was a lot of opportunity to do that, but that was based on market conditions. I just don't know what, like, what are we requiring?
Um, let's do this, if it's okay with you.
Yeah.
So let's go to, it's page two in the finance plan. And it just gives the sort of high-level detail, it's the executive summary. So first, the staff memo does a really nice job of sort of laying out kind of the purpose of the, the bond issue. So I don't have a lot to build on based on kind of what's included in the staff memo, but I think that the, the executive summary will answer that question that you have, Mayor. So again, we've got this size here of 23 million, 40,000. Based on the bid opening that's going to happen later this week, we will go ahead and adjust those numbers if need be before we bring the finance plan back to you in February. And then, of course, before we go out for sale in March. So proceeds here, again, we can be funding street reconstruction and rehab projects. And then the CIP portion being the training facility project. The security being the general obligation pledge of the city, as noted in the finance plan and also in your staff memo, we are anticipating that those franchise fees will fully cover the CIP portion of the debt service. Now, related to the repayment term, we've got a final maturity here, be out in 2046. We've got structure for the reconstruction piece being a 10-year term. And then, of course, the, the CIP portion being the 10 years. Estimated interest rate, true interest cost about 4.188. That does include 25 basis point cushion. Market's been a little, lately, and I know you've all been paying attention to unit rates lately. Of course you have. But maybe just going up, and then, you know, we've been seeing corrections. And it's pretty much been back and forth every.
Missed those 0.95.
Don't you? Even those, it made things a lot easier. But I mean, we've got, we've got a little bit of a cushion in there for planning purposes. Hopefully, things will start to settle down as we get a little bit further into the year. We saw some really nice rates in the beginning of December and then they kind of came up and now I'm just kind of, like I said, a bit of a seesaw. But Mayor, to your question here, so bonds maturing on or after February 1 of 2034 can be called for redemption beginning February 1 of 2033. So that's your call date. So at that point or at any date thereafter, you can call the bonds in in whole or in part. So you can call in certain maturities, you can call the bonds in in whole. Or at that point, you can restructure the bonds, whether that's for refinancing or shortening the term or lengthening the term if you're not receiving as you've been hoping. So there, there is sort of a way to change the structure at that point, but you have to have that lockout period through 2033.
It's about eight years. No flexibility though.
Yeah. And if you were collecting additional franchise fees over and above kind of what you're planning for, you could always just kind of add it in the debt service fund, you're kind of placing those into and sort of score all that cash away for when that call hits, so you're prepared to call those in at the time. Does that help?
Yeah, it does.
All right. And then, let me hear, just a couple more mentions here. So of course, we're going to be seeking a rating for the issuance. All of the numbers that are included in the plan, in this preliminary plan assume that the city's AAA rating would be affirmed by movies. We have no support that would not. The bonds will be considered tax exempt, non-bank qualified obligations, being that you are issuing more than $10 million in the calendar year. As always, there are, of course, risk factors in the issuance. Any debt, any risk factor that we're aware of, we do include in the plan itself. And looking at public sale, and that is planned to occur on March 19th. We've enrolled the sale at 10 a.m. that morning and like we typically do, we come back before you that evening with the results of that sale. And then we'd be recommending, unless there's some anomaly, we'd be recommending a word to the lowest bidder based on that true interest cost. And that would allow for a closing to occur on Wednesday, 16th. So then you have a backhoe in hand to continue the project.
So it's probably other better rates on St. Patrick's Day.
Is that St. Patrick's Day?
It is. It's all green.
Yeah. People are just bringing dinners that day and say, oh, yeah.
It means they're celebrating, it's a good day, the luck of the Irish.
Just 19, but 17.
It is 17. You've got a number of different schedules in here, the breakdown of the sources and uses for both the CIP portion related to the training facility and the the street reconstruction portion, excuse me. And then just a number of notes and details that are included here. I won't bore you to tears with all that information. I know you've been sitting here for a number of hours, but I'm happy to dive into any of it if you'd like to. So I will conclude my comments there, but like I said, happy to take any questions.
No, I just, I was just going to, we'll see if it continues to trend where it's a group of banks that are all kind of
Yeah, so we would imagine that, again, you'll be seeing national attention, especially upwards of $20 million, so very attractive size. But yes, we would imagine that there would be a larger syndicate fitting alongside whoever that will be.
Are there any council questions? All right. Thank you, as always.
And I have two minutes on food trucks. You know? I'll just say this, as a member of the Art Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Couldn't believe that I'm sitting here listening to this when we've never, ever been told anything about this. We know nothing about it and I have the utmost respect for Joe. So tomorrow, I'll reach out to Joe. Well, we'll reach out to our chair and then I'll reach out to Joe. When you think about, we spent many years trying to get this art crawl going downtown, which was to Michelle's point tonight and to Joshua's point. Takes a lot of time to make things successful. The art crawl, we've worked on for five years and we're only in our second year. And we take baby steps to make sure it's done right and done well. I just, everything I listened to tonight was absent any knowledge, involvement, contributions on the part of the Art Advisory. And I'll just reach out to Joe tomorrow on that subject because there are so many things that you know that we don't know. We, we would like to know just because we feel strongly about our responsibilities for what has been a huge success in our finance building. Thank you all for that. I wrote down 10 questions that you probably already have the answers to that we don't know anything about, but I'll do that, starting to move tonight before I go to bed.
Thanks, Bob. I just created a discussion. Many of your city administration updates. I'll just, I'll just, I have very quickly, last week I testified at the House about housing stuff. That's what it is. I was invited to have the same hearing again, the set tomorrow, not able to. Continue to update everybody. Is there any progress on that? Not taking much
But just, I emailed you all that number of applicants for boards and commissions, so thank you for that. Thank you for reaching out to your networks. Taylor will be setting up interviews or putting emails out to those people this week. But based on that number, those, I could be about like a nine to four kind of day on that Saturday that we have planned here. On March 8th.
Are we doing it here or?
Yeah.
Are we still trying to block those interviews by commission?
Yeah, I can tell you right here.
That's the plan, you know, if they can't make it, we'll have to figure that out.
Say Parks and Rec is going to take up first three hours of the day.
Yeah.
So the number I sent you has a couple duplicates to enter to apply twice, so that'll reduce that. At least three spots.
It's still, it's daunting to think about, but I still think it's better than
multiple lists.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, without a second question, Jerry.
Second.
I was about to say, I have.
Hi.
I was, for Jerry, thank you, everybody.